Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you.
Okay. I call the order, the Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, July 16th. Sorry, I just had to take a second look at that. That date didn't look right to me. 2014. And Commissioner Brown, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand and join in our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in thy soul, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Petches, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Agelston.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chair Darden.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Ruhlman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Okay. And today we have a special order of business, an update by Taylor Morrison Homes concerning the Marblehead Coastal Residential Development. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Phil Bodem, and I'm the Division President for Taylor Morrison here in Southern California. Our office is in Irvine here in Orange County. And I just wanted to give you about maybe a 10-minute update on where we are with the project and what you might see in the near future with respect to Marblehead Coastal. First of all, Taylor Morrison, we're a public homebuilding company. We closed on the property in the middle of April, and since then, we've been kind of moving things forward as the previous developer had been doing. And when we looked at the property and we acquired it, one of the things that we wanted to do was really just to come in and continue with everything that had been approved and continue with everything that was being built out on-site. We had no intentions of making any changes to the project, any significant changes to the project, notably lot count, configuration of parked streets, anything like that. And so really, like I say, it was just to take the project as it has been approved and continue on with the construction. And that's essentially what we've done so far. Specifically, the project was approved for 313 lots. After it was approved, the previous owner had come in and requested a homeowner association rec center facility to be included in the development, and that was going to take the place of five residential lots, bringing it down to 308 residential lots. They call that the Ocean Club, and the Ocean Club is located right here in Planning Area 1. And that's something that we're going to continue with, with the Ocean Club, although we are looking at maybe moving the location of the Ocean Club possibly to lots kind of more over in this location here. The reason being mostly because the current location contemplates a subterranean parking, probably about 25 feet below grade access off of this road here, and then families would have to walk up a steep flight of stairs with kids and lugging all your things that you take somewhere like this. So our new location will be able to provide surface parking for families. But let me kind of talk a little bit more about the overall project. We are continuing with the development work on-site right now, most notably Avenida Vista Hermosa and the trail system throughout. We think that we're going to be in a position to have all the site development in Avenida Vista Hermosa done by the end of this year, with the exception of the landscaping and the entry monumentation. We're updating irrigation plans and landscape plans to comply with current code, but otherwise, all the other improvements in AVH will be done by the end of this year, I think. Street lights, traffic signal lights, the connections on both ends of the bridge, so you'll actually be able to drive from, you know, from one end all the way down to Pico. But that said, there's also a condition with the coastal development permit that says the Phase 1 trail system throughout Marblehead Coastal have to be complete prior to the opening of Vista Hermosa, although the trail systems have nothing to do with Vista Hermosa being open. But so where we are on the trails, this site plan depicts the trails in black and in yellow. And those are, the black and yellow trails all have to be done as part of Phase 1 to open up Vista Hermosa. The trails outlined in black represent either completed or under construction and significantly complete. The trails outlined in yellow have not been started. We are out to bid on that work right now for those trails, and I think we'll be under construction on the balance of the trail system probably within the next, I don't know, maybe the next four weeks, something like that. And I know the previous owner had, I think, made representations or thought maybe that they could have the trail system built and complete by the end of this year, allowing for Vista Hermosa to be open by the end of the year. However, I, we're trying to stay to that schedule, but I would tell you that that's an aggressive schedule to have all those trails completed by the end of the year. I think more realistic, it's probably late January, early February to have the trails done. We understand the importance of getting Avenida Vista Hermosa open to the city, and we are doing everything we can to get those trails completed by the end of the year, although, like I say, I think it's an aggressive schedule. We're going as fast as we can, and if we can do it, we will. But I, you know, I would expect that it's probably a January, February timeframe for that. With respect to the residential nature of Marblehead Coastal, we are going to develop it in four different neighborhoods. Planning Area 1, as we're calling it up here, Planning Area 2 over here, Planning Area 3 here, and Planning Area 4 here. And the previous developer had also incorporated something that they referred to as the custom lot program, if you're familiar with that. And the custom lot program encompassed the entire Planning Area 4 and approximately 20 to 25 lots in Planning Area 3. We're going to do away with the custom lot program. The custom lot program was never a condition to this project. It was something that the previous developer had requested of the city, I think probably around in 2006 or 2007. I think they saw what was happening in Dana Point with the Strand project and thought that they could sell those lots and kind of approach it that way, pick the absolute best lots with the Marblehead Coastal and designate those as custom lots. We're a home builder, that's what we do, so we think it's in our best interest to control all the lots and build all those lots. So we are working on designs for the homes, for those custom lots, that essentially are consistent with the custom lot design guidelines that were approved in 2007, but there are some things within the guidelines and with the way the custom lot program was approved that doesn't work for us as a homebuilding company. So we're working with city staff, and I think ultimately, I think we have to bring that to maybe Planning Commission and City Council for approval, although I'm not entirely sure of that process. But whatever it is, we will comply with the approval process to undo the custom lot program. That said, one thing that's important for us to try to adhere to are some of the commitments that the previous developer had agreed to with the residents of Colony Cove. So for example, there are about six lots that side up to Colony Cove, and there was an agreement between the previous developer and the residents of Colony Cove that all six of those homes would be single-story homes. And we even incorporated a single-story plan within our design, about 2,500 feet, maybe a little bit bigger than that, but not much, that will be on all six of those homes to make sure that we're adhering to the agreements with Colony Cove, the Colony Cove residents. From a construction schedule standpoint, if all goes well, I think we'll have homes under construction maybe as soon as late spring next year. And that would put us in a situation of maybe having a grand opening of Marblehead Coastal maybe in late summer of next year. And then, like I say, if all goes well, we could actually see some homeowners living here by the end of next year. From an architectural elevation style, I saw what you guys were putting up and maybe a little bit of what you guys were talking about in your workshop, but our architectural elevations are, we're staying true to the, kind of the theme of what San Clemente is known for. We have Spanish Colonial, Andalusian, Monterey, and Santa Barbara elevation styles with a lot of, we're really spending a lot of time on the articulation of the elevations and some of the very specific details of the elevations to make them truly, I think, illustrate the elevation styles that we're talking about. Planning staff has, we've been working very, very closely with planning staff on the elevations and a lot of back and forth with our architect and with staff to make sure that our elevations are meeting the design guidelines and intent that the city wants to see here. So to that end, for Planning Areas 1, 2, and 3, there was previously approved architecture back in, again, I think it was around 2006 or '07, that had both floor plans and elevations that were approved. And we are modifying those floor plans and elevations slightly. We are essentially keeping the footprint of the buildings very close to what was approved. We're not deviating much from that at all. But we are adjusting the interior floor plans. The previous floor plans had very formal compartmentalized rooms and spaces within the home. And in 2007, that's what the market wanted, and now 2014, I think it's something very different with more open rooms and great rooms and kitchens that are really connected and opened into the family room where a lot of the social gathering takes place. So we're going through and we're updating the floor plans, bringing them to kind of what the current market conditions are looking for. And kind of the same thing with the elevations. One thing I want to point out, the things that we're not changing. We're not changing setbacks. We're not changing building heights, even on plans that were, you know, for one particular plan, floor plan had three elevations, and one elevation was 25 feet high. This one was, the second elevation was 26 feet high, and maybe the third one was 27 feet high. We are staying true to that, to those heights per elevation, as opposed to maybe taking a loose interpretation and saying, okay, the highest elevation was 27 feet, so we're going to apply that to all three. We're not doing that. We're keeping every building height the same as what was already approved. We understand that's important to the residents around Marblehead Coastal, and we're trying to be very sensitive to that. So we're not making any increases in that. That was something that was very important from city staff, and we had to kind of really work with our plans to make sure that we could do that, and we were successful in doing that and coming up with some fantastic elevations, I think. We're not changing the color palette. The Coastal Commission is very concerned with the color palette. We're not, we're not changing from what was approved there either. So again, it's really just updating the floor plans and elevations to kind of bring them to current, what's working well in the market today. Planning Area 1 is going to consist of 126 or 127 lots, depends on that Ocean Club situation. But for the sake of conversation, let's just say it's 126 lots there. They're all courtyard, they're all single-family detached, and the product there is going to range from about 2,200 feet to 2,600 feet. There are five floor plans within the courtyard product, and each floor plan will have three elevations. So five floor plans, three elevations, you're going to get a lot of diversity throughout that neighborhood. Planning Area 2, those are the 5,000-foot lots, there's 77 lots there, and the product we've designed there is kind of more of a traditional, single-family detached home that we're all kind of familiar with, and that product will range from about 3,300 up to about 3,900 square feet. Again, three floor plans, three elevations per floor plan. And then once we get over here to Planning Area 3, there's a blend of 5,500-foot lots and 6,000-foot lots. So we're going to be able to offer five different floor plans here, and again, with three different elevations. And then in Planning Area 4, what we're working on, there's a blend of 6,000 and 7,000-foot lots. So the product that we're developing for the 6,000-foot lots here will also, we would like to use that on the 6,000-foot lots over here. And then as well as introducing three new floor plans for the 7,000-foot lots there. And so that product on the 7,000-foot lots will go up to, go from about 4,000 up to about 5,100, 5,200 square feet on the largest home sites over there. So that's kind of our plan with the architecture and from the homebuilding side. And last night, I gave the same update to the City Council. One of the questions was if we intended to build all four planning areas concurrently, and that is our plan. We think that there's enough diversity in the product, the buyer profile that we're targeting, and the price points, that we could have four distinct selling neighborhoods within here at any given time. I think, you know, by the time plans get approved, we may not have them all open right at the same time at the beginning, but at some point, you know, maybe all of them would be open at the same time selling. The last thing that I would update you on is the status of the parks. There are four public parks. Pico Park right along here, these plans are approved. And if you notice, one of the great things about this, all these trails ultimately connect over here to Pico Park. But if you drive by Pico, you'll see a flight of staircases that have been installed recently. I saw it the other day. And so there's a little bit of development work that we're doing there right now, but the overall park plans are approved. We're out to bid on those, and I think we're going to be under construction in six to eight weeks on Pico Park. The sports park up here. The sports park, those plans, we had to, again, because when these plans were developed and approved probably back in 2007, there's been a lot of code change to various things. So we're updating all of those plans. We will probably submit the sports park plans for first plan check to the city probably in early October, and if that's the case, I think we could potentially have the sports park under construction December or January. And then the other two parks, there's one here, and I forget, one's called, on the site plans, it's Park G, and it also has a name, this one's Park H, but these plans were in for first plan check later this month on one of these parks, I forget which one, and then the other one is coming up in September. But the bottom line is, I think we could have these two parks under construction probably November, December, November or December of this year. So theoretically, all four parks will be under construction, say, by January at the latest, and then the construction schedule, obviously, and the sports park is probably going to take the longest to complete. So that's really the update that I have for you. We understand that the city is very anxious to see Vista Hermosa open. We understand that the trails need to be complete to get that done, and we understand that opening up these parks is also something very important to the city. So as we look at the development work that's going on out here, those are kind of the three hot-button items that we're working on and really laser-focused on to get done as soon as we can right now. That's really the only, what I, the information that I have for you. I don't know if there's any questions, but...
Well, I do. Jim? I know we're seeing these design changes in design review, and we weren't clear at that time what, what the rest of the review process was. Is there some clarity on that? Do we now know, is it going to City Council after us, or does it come to Planning Commission? Or zoning?
It really depends, and I don't really have a definite answer now. My thought was, we're going to look into the zoning administrator. It just depends on what the zoning administrator's determination is when he gets back to the office on Monday to take a look at the extent of the changes. Because the heights aren't changing and the basic concept is, you know, retained, that's why we're looking into the zoning administrator. So I guess it's to be determined.
Okay. And are there some other questions, Commissioner Brown?
Well, since we just went through our study session on the details, so you are in the Design Review Subcommittee, are seeing all these detailed changes in the detailed plans, exterior elevations, so let me, to stand as we just discussed, and of course, with the various needs they have.
It does not fall under the architectural overlay, so as best as we can require somebody not in the architectural overlay, yes.
They're not all, you know, Spanish Colonial Revival.
No, there's Monterey, there's, I'm heartened by that, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Any other question? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah.
I was listening your light.
I was, oh, I'm sorry about that. I was just curious, are the trails going to be open at the same time that Vista Hermosa is, or are you going to, will those not be accessible until the homes are built?
Ask your question again.
The trails, are they going to be opened to the public when Vista Hermosa is open? At the same time? Okay, great.
Yes. And I don't know if any of you have been out on-site lately to see the trails that have been completed. If you haven't, I would encourage you. I'd be happy to take you on a quick little tour. They're fantastic, and I can't wait for the public to be able to have access to these trails. And quite frankly, I think people kind of sneak out there right now and take advantage of the trails that have been constructed on the weekend. It's not open to the public, I just want to make sure that's known. But the trails are fantastic. Decomposed granite, they've got a nice rail along them. We've got, in some locations, we've already installed some of the benches and the trash cans that are out there. I think these trails are going to be a real amenity to this location and to the city and to the existing residents, not even talking about the residents that are going to live here, but the residents of San Clemente. This is a fantastic piece of property, and when you get out there and you see the views of the canyons and out to the ocean, it really is spectacular. And we're trying to do everything we can to, like I tell our staff, to be good stewards of the land of this project for it is approved and to really kind of make it, make sure that the vision that was created when this project was approved really comes to life. And I think we're seeing that out there now. So we're really excited about it. If you ever have any questions or would like to go out there and watch some of the trails or the parks or anything with me, I'd be more than happy to do that anytime.
I'm going to take you up on that offer.
Yeah, you got it.
Bart?
And Jim, you may have an answer for this. Apparently, no architecture's been submitted for the 7,000-square-foot lots yet.
That's correct. We're still working with our architect on that. I think that we're going to submit a formal application probably within the next, maybe, two weeks.
So am I correct, Jim, that those would go through the full process? Because those are on the bluffs and the most visible from PCH?
Yeah, that's our understanding as well, is that we would probably have to go through the full process, because it's my understanding that to get the custom lot program approved, whenever it was, that they went through Planning Commission and City Council to do that, and so city staff has told us to undo it. We're going to go through that same process. Yeah. And we're looking forward to showing you what we're doing there, too.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Thanks for catching us up.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now we move on to approval of, or amendment of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first are the minutes from the study session of July 2nd, 2014. Are there any changes or motion for approval?
I move approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Passes 7-0. Then the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of July 2nd, 2014.
I have one small change on page 2, just related administrative thing. Page 2, Section B, first paragraph, it says that the DSRC meets at 10:00 a.m. That's been changed recently to 3:00 p.m. And if there's no other changes, I'll move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Passes 7-0. Okay, that brings us to oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any cards?
No.
Okay. With, with, with no cards and seeing no one stepping forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item on our agenda this evening is 2316 South El Camino Real, conditional use permit 13-249, architectural permit 13-251, site plan permit 13-252, La Ventura Event Center with shared parking agreement. Amber Gregg, would you like to present this to us?
Yes, please. Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Please bear with me if I'm a little slower tonight than typical. We had a pretty long meeting last night, and I am in it for the long haul, so it's very, another very important project, but if I talk a little slower, it's only because I'm, that coffee hasn't kicked in. So the project that we're talking about tonight is the La Ventura Event Facility. This project is located at 2316 South El Camino Real. That is at the terminus of East Avenida San Gabriel in El Camino Real, as you can see here on this map. But first, I'd like to give you a little background on this project. This project was originally approved by the Planning Commission in 2009. It was approved as a two-story commercial and office building, and since that time, the applicant has decided to revise that proposal and is now proposing an event facility to be located here for special occasions. This project came before you in December, and at that time, it was a two-story development that was approximately 9,500 square feet, but there was a concern between the shared parking agreement with the adjacent property owner, and we basically tabled the item so that way the two property owners could resolve any questions that they had. During that time, the applicant decided to actually downsize the project. He reduced the size of the facility from 9,500 square feet to approximately 5,500 square feet. That's before you today. That removed the second story of the proposal, as well as a basement that was provided for storage. That brings us to today's proposal. So in summary, what we're looking at tonight is a 5,456-square-foot event facility. This application requires an architectural plan and a site plan for the building design, as well as a conditional use permit for the public assembly use, as well as a requested off-site parking agreement. And there's also an interpretation regarding a courtyard wall that goes around the front of the property. So here's the site plan. This project is a very unique design. It is, it's bound by developments on both sides. We have San O Tires in looking at this configuration to the left and Spanish Village to the right. Currently asked design, that parcel actually has no frontage, so a new curb cut will be located on El Camino Real. And as part of this, to have access off of there, the applicant will have to reconfigure that intersection in order to accommodate this curb cut. That site design was actually approved in 2009, and because it was so hard to get to an approved design, the applicant did not modify the proposed site design at all. It was very important to staff that an ingress egress be provided off of El Camino Real. Later on in this presentation, I'll go over the fact that there is a reciprocal access and parking agreement along the back. But as you'll see also as we go through this presentation, that East Avenue, or West Avenida San Gabriel, which is directly adjacent to it, is a residential neighborhood that has had a lot of parking and traffic issues in the past, and so staff and the applicant felt very strongly that its own ingress and egress needed to be provided on-site. So that access is on the right-hand side of the parcel, on the left-hand side in this area, if my pointer works. This is an open courtyard. It's approximately four feet off the property line with landscaping between the sidewalk and the building. Then approximately 45 feet back, we have the event facility. It has a grand parlor and several other amenities that we'll go over in a second. And the parking is at the back of the property. This site design helped mitigate several things, including potential noise concerns from the courtyard. By having the courtyard located at the front of the property with the building in the middle, the building provides some buffering from any noise that is generated from the courtyard, from the neighbors behind. This project is conditioned to not have any amplified sound on the courtyard. So that way, you don't have any speakers blaring to cause disturbance to any of the other residences, but still just ambient noise from people gathering outside was a concern, so that helped mitigate that. So this is a closer detail of the grand parlor that's in here, a kitchen for catering for the caters that are on-site. There are two lounges, one for the bride and the groom, assuming they're going to be getting ready on-site or for any other special occasion. There is storage here for tables and chairs, as well as the restrooms. On the right-hand side, we have a detail of that courtyard. There are lands... There are landscaping rounds on the sides, a fireplace in the center. And this is really meant to be an indoor-outdoor event facility with the French doors that open outside to take advantage of our amazing weather here. So now for the architecture. This is the front elevation, if you're standing on El Camino Real. This wall here is the courtyard wall. Inside that courtyard wall are two segmented arches that will have murals located in them. The murals will be reviewed under a minor architectural permit process, so they will go before Designer Re-Subcommittee, and then ultimately be approved by the zoning administrator. But during Designer Re-Subcommittee's review, there were no murals initially on there, but we thought that was a great way to bring a pedestrian feel in this pedestrian automobile-oriented area, and also bring some culture and history to the building as well through those images. This is the elevation of the building if you were actually inside of the courtyard. So you have the doorways, the French doors that would open onto there with the building behind. It is, again, a one-story building, but it does have raised ceilings on the inside for the grand parlor. On your left-hand side, you have the foyer where cars can park and people would enter into the main access of the building. This is the elevation along the main drive aisle. On the right-hand side, you see a gate that will actually be an architectural detail. It's a gate that houses a vertical garden, and that will be planted with succulents, and it's used as a screen. So if you do have a bride coming in there, that will be her grand entrance, and she will be screened by the landscaping within there. There's also a 10-foot arcade that surrounds the building that you can see along here, as well as the wood rafters, not rafters, trellis, thank you, sorry. And here's the covered patio there also. This is the side elevation that faces Siano Tires. This project is located on the property line. It does have a taller elevation on this side, so Designer Re-Subcommittee worked with the applicant in order to provide some architectural details to provide relief, so we did not just have one stark white wall along there. There was also a lot of attention paid to the landscape plan. Since this is on the property line, the owner of Siano Tires has been kind enough to enter into a landscaping agreement with the proposed property owner in order to landscape his side of Siano Tires to help provide relief against the building. And then this is the rear elevation that will be along the back parking lot area. So I also wanted to show the side.
Well, we have those other two elevations up. Would you mind just addressing that, or unless you're planning on addressing it later? The issue of the expansion joints and what was decided at DRSC?
Yes. So this is a Spanish colonial revival-type architectural building, but it is not located within the A overlay. The applicant did have a great desire in order to have expansion joints in there because of the concerns of cracking, given the large spans of area on that side. The Designer Re-Subcommittee made the determination that limited expansion joints could be provided so long as they added to the architecture of the building. So they couldn't just be placed anywhere, they had to somehow incorporate into the design. What the applicant has proposed is basically control joints that are made to replicate the columns, they're actually on the opposite side of the building. And the final location of the control joints will be approved by the city planner prior to building permits being issued.
Thank you.
And rear elevation again. So I just wanted to show the landscaping plan. Along the back property line here, there will be trees and landscaping to help buffer between the residences that are on this side, particularly the one resident that lives here, as well as landscaping fingers around the development, as well as in the front along El Camino Real. So when you, I'm sorry.
On the screening on the back, how tall will that be, and wide or thick will that screening area be for the residents?
Let me look at the plans really quickly, I'm sorry. If you don't mind if I look that up while you guys are taking public comments.
Sure.
And that way you come back with the answer.
Yeah.
There is, Amber, a back wall though, isn't there? A stucco wall that would be after that?
Yes, the applicant is proposing a block wall based on the current plans. And I will let the applicant stand up and speak to this later, but there is a resident who has a long history of parking RV in the rear part of the lots, and I don't want to speak out of turn for any members of the public or the applicant. But what the applicant has informed me is that they're aware that she takes access from there and are talking to the adjacent property owner, Spanish Village, about allowing her, just her personally, to continue access there. So they're also looking at potentially just having a wood fence as opposed to the block wall as part of this, but they are open to that, just to make that clear.
I know.
I'm sorry. Okay, so on to parking. Whenever you have a public assembly, the biggest concerns are typically parking as well as noise issues associated with it. So for parking, the applicant is providing 18 onsite parking spaces. That is not enough parking in order for him to get to the desired capacity that he needs. So what the applicant has requested to do is to utilize off-site parking of 22 parking spaces. By doing that, that gives him a grand total of 40 parking spaces, which gets him to a maximum occupancy of 40 people in that event facility. 160, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm so sorry. In addition to that, the applicant is also providing valet services or requesting to provide valet services. Typically, parking does become more efficient as far as the number of cars you can get into spaces, but staff does not count those additional spaces in our review because we can't guarantee that the valet's always going to be used. So we use the 40 space maximum for his occupancy.
Amber, regarding the valet, and you might not know this, we might need to ask the applicant, but do you know what the path of travel is that they have planned? Are they exiting off of San Gabriel, or?
No. There's actually, in your packets, there is a letter from the valet service that shows their ingress and egress, but their main, their actual ingress and egress will be off of El Camino Real. There is a condition of approval that does not allow them actually to access Avenue de San Gabriel because it was so important to staff and the applicant to not have traffic on there.
Yeah, that's correct.
If they exit from, I don't know how they're going to turn around. If a car comes in and drops somebody off, how are they going to turn around to then go back on to El Camino Real?
I'll go ahead and let the applicant discuss that, but what they have said is that they're agreeable to having that ingress and egress off of El Camino Real, and that their valet services will adhere to that requirement.
And has engineering looked at that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the parking spaces that I've noted in the valet, there is actually a private parking access agreement between the adjacent property, San O Tires and Spanish Village. However, the adjacent property owners were not willing to enter into that agreement with a third party to say, yes, we're willing to keep this easement in place. If you're not willing to enter into a third party, the city cannot recognize that as provided parking because we can never ensure that that parking will actually stay. If the private parties decide to dissolve that, the city has no say in that. But I'll go over that in a little more detail as to where that's actually located. So in terms of the off-site parking, there is an alleyway that's located off of East Avenue de San Gabriel, and it is within 300 feet of the proposed project, which is the requirement of the zoning ordinance. The portion of the parking that's in there actually, though, is not paved. It's really a dirt lot that some people have used to park on. So as part of this request, the applicant has offered to construct the retaining walls, pave the parking lot and level it, stripe the spaces, install the required landscaping that meets the city's landscape requirements, and the most expensive endeavor actually is to provide all necessary water quality improvements associated with the development of this parking area. In addition to that, the applicant has agreed to lease the parking lot from the city for a fee to be determined by the City Council.
Wayne?
Amber, if you could go back to the last slide. I see there's a crosswalk here, but in order for the valet to go.
I'm sorry, are you discussing?
Right, yeah. In order for the valet service to pick up the car that's going to be parked up here, they're going to have to cross two streets.
That's correct.
Was there any thought given to a crosswalk on the other, in this other area here?
I would have to defer that to our city engineer. They have preliminarily reviewed the design of the revised intersection, and the engineering and the applicant are comfortable with where that plan is at as far as moving forward with the details. But I would have to defer to him on if engineering actually wanted that crosswalk there.
Otherwise, he's going to have to cross two streets. And quite frankly, I think probably the valet service is just going to not do that. They're just going to cross the easiest way, where there's no crosswalk. And I think it creates an issue there for a traffic issue.
Okay. Do you want me to finish the presentation and then we'll go? Okay. So in order to help address concerns related to parking in the adjacent neighborhood, the city has placed a condition of approval on the project to require that the management company provide informational brochures to anyone who rents the facility identifying where the on- and off-site parking locations are, to inform them where and where their guests can and cannot park. There's also a condition that prohibits valet companies from parking on the adjacent streets, and there's a condition that requires that the valet service shall use El Camino Real as an ingress egress. So this is the location of the access and parking easement that I was discussing earlier. Goes from West Avenue de San Gabriel and behind the three properties, the four actually, if you include the liquor store, and out, Spanish Village by the sea. But again, since it's a private easement, it's not recognized by the city. But the applicant currently does have access to that, but that is between those private parties. So now the concern is noise. And noise, we looked at the hours and the operation of the facility to see best ways to address that, to help ensure there are no adverse impacts on the surrounding communities. So the proposed hours of operation are daily, 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and until 1:00 a.m. for holidays such as New Year's. Some of the conditions of approval for those types of operating hours is no amplified sound on the courtyard, that the courtyard must close at 10:00 p.m. That way you don't have any noise after that in accordance with the city's noise ordinance, and no outside loading or unloading between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. The last portion of this application is for an interpretation. The zoning ordinance states that fences, walls, and hedges cannot exceed six feet in height, unless that wall is identified to be an accessory structure. So we're going to, if it is an accessory structure, then that feature can exceed six feet in height and can actually go up as high as whatever the underlying zoning is and meet the same setback requirements as well. So definitions of an accessory structure, and I apologize, but there's a lot of information on here. An accessory structure means a structure that is incidental to the primary building onsite, and some of those classifications can include a fence, a wall, a deck, and it goes on. An accessory building means a building which may either be attached or detached from the primary building on the same lot but is incidental in scale. And then in order for a building or an accessory structure to be attached, it's considered attached when it is structurally a part of the primary building, sharing a minimum of one common wall with the adjacent building. So staff believes that the courtyard wall is an attached accessory structure in that it is incidental to the primary building, it meets the classification of a wall as a minor structure, and it shares a common wall with the main building on two sides. Not only that, but staff feels that that courtyard wall also functions more as an accessory structure as opposed to just a property line barrier wall, in the fact that it's enclosing a courtyard that will function as basically an open-air room or trellis. So that concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Amber. I have a question regarding, I know you've gone to great lengths to evaluate noise impacts on the properties, the residential properties behind the facility. And also in the conditions of approval, you mentioned that if there are noise issues that the situation will be reevaluated. But one question, the condition of approval mentions if businesses, adjacent businesses have a problem. It doesn't mention residences. And in all the discussion, we've been talking about only the properties behind the event center. Did you have any concerns about the properties that are on the other side of San Gabriel? Do you feel those are, what's, do you know what the distance is for those?
Not the exact distance for those, but during the review, we did look at it because the best way to lessen noise impact is distance. And we felt that the distance between, with not having amplified sound on the courtyard, and the distance between the courtyard and where the residences are, because you do have some commercial in front of them, that that would be far enough in order to diminish any impacts on them. In regard to the condition that you're noting, we're very happy to add concerns by residences to business owners as well to them.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions, Amber?
I want to ask a quick question on the last item that you said. Can you explain to me how the patio wall is, shares a common wall with the building? At which point is the wall you're referring to?
Let's go to the elevations really quick. So it's a little hard to tell because of this here, but this wall actually continues on from this main wall out past to, it's basically a continuation of that wall along that property line.
So the wall does not have to be the same size as the actual structure?
That's not required? No.
Okay, so you're saying that wall is built, it's not just attached to the building, it's part of the building? That's what you're saying?
That's correct. My understanding is that it's a continuation structurally as part of that building.
I don't understand structurally how it's part of it. Maybe Bart can explain that.
Well, I think what we're really looking at here is the fact that should they have chosen to, they could have built this building up to the street, a zero-front setback with a solid building. And they've chosen basically to have an open airspace that they're going to utilize as an occupancy area that is surrounded by wall. This is a loose interpretation, but I think it's a valid one, and I think it's something we need to clean up a little bit when we do our code updates.
And I think we want to be careful. I think we're moving into discussion, so we might want to just make sure to, at this point, direct our questions to staff.
And I do, I have a question for Amber. On the, since we've done this with other projects and struggled with it, the parking on the other side of El Camino, there's existing paved parking to the south of it. Is that a sign to the business properties that are there, or is that just a city parking lot available to anybody?
That is public parking. We have entered into a lease agreement with different businesses back there for them to utilize that parking, but it still has to remain public parking for the time that is not utilized by them.
And basically, I just wanted to make sure we weren't limiting those four commercial sites by assigning this to the other side. And I don't think it does, I just wanted confirmation from you.
That's correct.
And I think Wayne is next.
Under number 11 of the resolution, it says amplified sound shall be permitted indoors only in a manner that conforms to the city's noise ordinance during the approved operating hours. All doors and windows shall remain closed when the amplified sound is in use.
That's correct.
Well, that sounds good, except for the fact that when people are out on the patio, how are the doors going to be, remain closed at that point? Are the doors self-closing, or how are the doors going to be closed? Because there's going to be people going in and out, and I'm sure there's going to be amplified sound inside at the same time. So how is that going to be addressed?
I'll leave that question to the applicant as far as how he's planning on managing this property. He is aware of all the conditions of approval and is in agreement with him.
Okay, and I think Jim was next.
I have a question about the parking and access and parking easement that, you had a slide up there with a big chunk of yellow, yeah. And so this is not, this parking is parking that we can't, an access that we can't officially count, right? Because they're not in agreement with the city.
That's correct.
So it could potentially, an owner in the future could say, build a wall or chain off there, that south side of the parking lot, so you couldn't get ingress or egress from the south side, correct?
Well, that.
Potentially, that could happen.
If that private agreement was dissolved, yes. But those private parties would have to dissolve their agreement prior to somebody putting it in. it in.
Okay. But it could happen independent of the city.
Yeah, correct.
Does that affect, I noticed on one of the diagrams, and I couldn't find it when I was looking up here, but there's some ingress and egress listed from that direction. So that, my question is, is-
Sorry, I want to go to the site plan.
Okay. My question is, is how could the loss, potential loss of ingress and egress from that area affect this property?
Affect this building?
Yeah.
Here?
For instance, I'm imagining the valet, and we might not know this yet, but the valets might pull out here and then go through that parking lot to get, to leave El Camino Real over on the southern, through that southern, the driveway to the south. So if they lost that, for instance, how might that affect the ingress and egress overall?
There is enough area here that if, for cars to turn around, basically hammerhead areas where they can pull out and go, so the project can stand on its own if walls were built and still comply with engineering requirements to maneuver around the site.
Okay, thanks. Oh, and are we, another question, are we, are we going to get a presentation about the, any changes to the intersection that are going on? Is that coming up?
No, I spoke to engineering prior to coming to planning commission to ask if that was something that they had, and they had stated that they have looked at preliminary designs, and they're comfortable with moving it forward to planning commission, but that is something that they are going to work in detail with, with the applicant afterwards, which is why the condition is on there the way it is right now.
What condition number is that?
I believe that's 34E.
34E, okay, thank you.
Amber, before you move from that slide, I did look up the width of this landscape area right here.
Thank you.
Right here. And it's, it says on the site plan, it's a foot and a half from the face of the curb to the back of the landscape area. So if you assume that it's a six-inch curb, it's a foot of actual dirt area.
Is that enough for a tree, one foot? Staff report says there's going to be trees backed up.
Yes, they do show trees at the back portion of that.
Do we know what kind of trees?
I'm sorry, I'm looking to see if the architect, or the landscape architect is here.
Perhaps we can ask the architect when he comes forward. Don, did you have a question as well? Your light was on.
Amber, I just have one other question on that intersection. It mentions under 34E that we might be redoing the left turn pocket. Is this everything that we're doing, or just it's not limited to that?
I'm going to invite Zach Ponsen up at this time, if that's okay, since we do have a number of questions in regard to this. And let him address them.
Hi, Zach Ponsen with Engineering Department. Sorry, what was the question again?
The left turn pocket, is that going to be modified, or is that just a possibility?
The left turn pocket from-
On El Camino, turning left at that intersection?
Up to, up east San Gabriel.
Perhaps the design, I don't know if you bought your Civil? It's been a little while since we looked at the intersection plan, but you're right, it has a left turn pocket. I don't expect that to change. The only thing that was going to be changed was, I don't believe there'd be a left turn pocket going northbound into the site, if I remember correctly. So it would have, I don't believe that left turn pocket onto east San Gabriel would change. I don't think so. The crosswalk that was brought up earlier, I think that was looked at too with Tom Frank's, and even, this has been around for a long time, Akram was also involved in this intersection before he left. There are so many curb cuts on that side of the intersection, and with the stacking that often happens at Pedro's intersection, that was probably why there's not a crosswalk there to begin with. So it could be looked at when they redesign the intersection, but I think there's a reason why it's not on that side to begin with.
Is the signaling going to change at all? I think on the east San Gabriel, isn't that a red, no, no right turn on a red, isn't it, at that intersection? Can you remember? Can you turn?
Yeah, we didn't get into that much detail in terms of the intersection. We looked at the alignment just to see that people coming down east San Gabriel can still go straight forward, in the unlikely event that it's really for the valets coming back. That lines up properly. East San Gabriel has a little bit of a striping turn, it kind of has a little bit of a whip as you get to the crosswalk. And so with that little bit of a whip, it actually lines up pretty well with the intersection across the way. And so the design actually also took into consideration the existing traffic signal pole locations. That way, he placed his curb cut so that it's to avoid the existing traffic signals, so that hopefully he can avoid having to replace all four traffic signal poles. And that way, he'd be able to leave at least one and reduce his cost on that. But it also happened to light up better with east San Gabriel, so that helps.
The last question I would have is, what consideration was given for the traffic from Pedro's, going in and coming out? And the use of this intersection with this use coming in and out, and all those cars being valeted? I just wondered what consideration was given?
Yeah, I'm technically not the traffic engineer, so I don't know how much they looked into that intersection. Ultimately, Pedro's patrons shouldn't be blocking the intersection. So if that's the case, and you're coming southbound on it, they're already in violation of blocking an intersection if they're stacking up that far anyway to turn into Pedro's. So my experience in the area is, most people notice they back at the signal if they're turning that way, or it doesn't queue up that long. Most people go straight and then turn around, because you tend to get cut, you tend to get cut off.
Yellow right here, you're not supposed to be turning left.
Yeah, actually, most people go down the street, turn around, because if you do try to turn left right there, most people going northbound will cut you off going into Pedro's. So since they have a right turn and they're waiting for you, it seems to be a little bit, you're right, actually, it is a double yellow, so it probably isn't legal.
I thought you could make a left turn on a double yellow.
In an isolated pocket that-
Isolated?
Yeah.
Edge of the street.
Yeah. So it's such a short segment, we'd have to pull up Google Street View to see how it's striped right now. I don't believe it's a broken on the inside. So it's a double, I believe it's a double, double for a weird little island in there.
I do, I have to say that. But I was told by the police chief at the time that the double yellow in front of the Miramar, the street right before the Miramar, they made it a double yellow, and I said, "How are we supposed to turn there now?" And he goes, "Oh, you can do that."
You know, I inquired about this recently on the, there was an automobile used in North Beach that just went, came forward, and we were talking about turning across the double yellow on that one. And so that one also came up, and I'd asked Tom Frank, and he said it was allowed to cross those. So if it's a single double yellow, then you should be allowed to get there.
Okay.
If it's an isolated, some places, we have an isolated turn pocket where you can kind of get into the center of the lane and then turn across. But usually, the center line in those cases is broken, so that it indicates you can still turn into that center protected island, kind of.
Okay.
Any more questions for Zach, or shall we hear from the applicant or his representative?
I have one question.
Sure, Michael.
Of the fence or wall, I'm not sure what we're talking about, but the one that is on the south side of the building that separates the drive-in from the next property, what's the height to the make of that wall?
It's probably a freestanding wall.
It's a six-foot-tall block wall that's proposed on the plans, that would have the same finish, the smooth, the stucco finish to match the building.
So if you're, if you're driving north on El Camino, when you approach the site, you're going to see that six-foot-high continuous wall with no landscaping?
On, on his side of the property line, are you stating, or are you talking, I'm sorry, I'm-
No, if I was driving north on El Camino Real.
Okay. So if you are coming this way-
I would see across the property, that blank side of that wall.
And the neighbor's property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so right here, you have a flower stand that's currently existing, and landscaping on that side as well, so-
So there is some landscaping there? Just trying to wonder what that, that wall's going to look like.
Yes, there is. There's a, there's a flower stand right here, and there is landscaping on this side.
Oh, okay, that's good. Then the other question I have is, what about the cross-traffic between this new facility and Pedro's? Is there, how is that going to be controlled? I mean, people could drive through either one of these properties, it seems like. How do you envision that to be controlled? You got people that are going to be in here, they're going to probably use part of Pedro's to exit out, and maybe some to come in? Is that, this is another way, because of the El Camino being kind of difficult? If you come in with your valet parking, I would think that the valet's got to come out of there and turn somewhere, he's not going to probably back up and go out the way he came in.
I'm sorry, Michael, just to clarify, excuse me, are you talking about the ingress and egress on the side itself?
Yeah, I'm talking about, if they go that way, they're going to go through Pedro's parking lot.
Okay, this is Siano Tires, I believe, is the parcel.
That's Siano Tires, right there.
I just want to make sure I'm addressing the right question.
Pedro's is across El Camino.
So to-
So they're going to share that parking lot essentially? They're, they're open to each other?
They are still required to share that area if they decide to do so. The city is not going to say you cannot use your private access agreement. They still have all rights to that. The thing that the city can control is requiring as part of the management plan of the facility to show people where they can and cannot park associated with this, as well as require the valet service to use the El Camino Real ingress and egress. But yes, I know a lot of the residents actually use this pathway and this access in order to access their neighborhood too.
Okay, so that'll be a lot of traffic in there?
We would not restrict the flow of traffic on there.
That's my question.
Wayne?
Amber, have, on the Spanish Village side, have they worked out an agreement?
Yes, and speaking with the owner of the Spanish Village, that they're satisfied with the project. I don't want to speak out of turn for him. If he is here tonight, more than happy to come up, but in the conversation that I have had with him, he does not have concerns with this proposal.
And who did you speak to at Spanish Village?
Chuck Neri.
Chuck Neri. Chuck Neri, all right, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Zach, did you have something?
Sorry, there's been a couple mentions of what happens if that closes down, that agreement between Chuck Neri's group and that too. I would actually probably, I'm going to guess that they would actually need OCFA approval for that, since it's most likely a fire truck access to the back of those buildings. So in order to close that and get that, if they did quit claiming that, start putting up walls, they might be violating their fire access. So there is some review in there in terms of, not that the city has control over the private easement and access easement, but if they started putting up walls, they could be violating something else, so.
Thank you, Zach. Would the applicant or his representative like to step forward and make a presentation, or?
Hi, I'm Don Kapoff.
Unless you don't want to make a presentation, you're just available for questions, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I have an easy one, I think. Where the flower shop is now, if I'm looking at this correctly, on the adjacent line, and there's, the traffic light is there, and some electrical boxes, and there's kind of a large tree. And that tree is not on your property, that's on the other property?
That's correct.
So that will be remaining?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Wayne?
A couple of questions. How can, how's there going to be accommodations for turnaround within the site here in order for the valet service to both, to go in and out of the street? It doesn't look like he's going to, when a car comes in and drops people off, and a valet picks the car up, how are they then going to maneuver to turn around to exit to go across El Camino Real?
Perhaps, Mr. Kapoff, if you'd describe overall how everything with the valet is going to work, because I think there are a number of questions about that.
There was a plan that was submitted, was that not, you didn't receive the plan? I think primarily, if they come down, they could always back in until parking, little parking stall is open and go back out. There's no reason, we've already told people over here that we're not going to exit east San, east or west San Gabriel over here. Conversely, they could also go out Chuck Neri's, but the plan is to go in and out on our, on my driveway. They could easily back into parking lot and take the car back out.
Or would you have your valet service do that for them, so to make it easier on the, on the people, when they want to leave, let's say?
When I leave, the car will be parked here, this is what this, this is what is identified as when you pick your car or drop it off. So the valet service takes it, they leave the car here, valet service comes down, pulls it back around, goes back out, or parks it back here, however it may be. And then when you leave the facility, your car is here, and you just drive out.
So the valet service positions the car?
This is ECR here, right? Yeah.
So-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So when someone picks up their car, I'm so confused here, someone picks up their car, the valet service is going to come in and pick them up, and then how are they going to position to go back out again, the driver of the car, the owner of the car?
Valet's going to do it for them. Right. It's just like if you're at any hotel, that when the car comes in for you, it's already pointed out in the direction that you're going to go, right? Here, it just happens to be that the car will be pointing out towards ECR.
Okay.
They're going to bring the car through around here, drive up, and you go out that way.
All right. As far as amplified music inside and the courtyard, you're going to have amplified music inside, and it's going to be, people are going to be on the courtyard area and inside. How will you keep the doors closed when that happens?
Eric, can you answer that, please?
Is that okay, Mike?
Yes.
This is Eric Wagner, he's the owner by release, he's going to be my sole caterer. Okay. All right. Well, with our experience of doing a lot of weddings and banquets in San Clemente, at multiple different facilities, places like the Casa Romana and the casino, that outdoor courtyard area is primarily going to be used for something like a presentation or a ceremony. After that, the main party is going to be inside the main ballroom. Hands down, people are still going to want to hang out and mingle, or if you have any smokers, they might be out there. But I think that the way that this building is set up, not only do you have the distance setback from El Camino Real, the distance of El Camino Real, then commercial buildings, then residential, you're a substantial ways from any residential, from the edge of the actual building. Now, we can modify, I mean, we can monitor, try to keep the doors closed as much as possible, and maybe have some notes down, or have staff that are saying, "Due to noise restrictions, we do have to keep these doors closed." But as you've seen at other facilities, as an example, the Casa Romana, those arched doorways that face the ocean, they don't get closed all night long, and there's no noise complaints.
You know, I really believe that noise is going to climb up that hill there, to say the least.
Sure.
Are the doors going to be self-closing?
Sure, that's something we can definitely look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kapoff, could you go back to the valet? There were also some questions about, you know, how the valet is going to get back and forth on foot. So could you describe that process as well for us?
When we spoke, when we first came up with the idea of using, of developing that property, Amber and I looked at it, and we see, it seemed to us to make sense that it was a perfect situation, because there was already two crosswalks, one across ECR and the one against across San Gabriel. So, and I would think they would use that.
So you, and you've spoken, obviously, with the valet service-
I have.
Right. And you have, yeah, and I know we have a letter in our packet, but, and the valet service feels comfortable with being able to provide the type of service that you need running across those two crosswalks and then up to that lot?
Yes, they do, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Don, you have a question?
I have one more on that issue of the valet. This is not strictly valet parking. This is offered where patrons can park themselves, correct?
No, I mean, as far as off-site parking, you mean, or what?
Well, the way the staff report reads is that there's two conditions, and it's requiring the management to inform customers not to park on adjacent streets and provide pamphlets identifying the on-street, the on-lot parking and the off-site parking. So to me, that means that the patrons are going to be self-parking, and if you have a valet also, you know, that lot's going to be full, and the valet, I mean, they can leave a space open, they can do that, but you're going to have people parking themselves also, and going in and out of there.
That's a possibility, especially for a smaller wedding, but if it's for 160 people, we fully anticipate, actually, over 100, I think it's going to be, or we're going to require the people that are renting the facility to pay for the valet service, so that's part of the deal. They have to have, they're going to pay for the valet service, they will be there.
And that group will be told that it'll be valet parking?
Absolutely, yeah. They're going to pay, I mean, they're going to have to pay for that service, it's part of the deal.
How do you keep the off-site parking clear so that your event center could use it? How do you, how is that going to be maintained clear?
Just a city.
That'll be-
That'll be something that'll be worked out with the city council under the agreement to the lease agreement.
What would be some of the ways that it could be made open?
The way we handle other public parking lots is that we sign them so many hours beforehand with notification that says this lot is closed between these hours. And the city does have standards as far as how far in advance that has to be signed when it has to go up. So they'd be required to follow those same standards.
And they're the ones providing the signage and closing it? The city is not?
Yes, yes.
Don?
Yeah, a question, you said you're going to require valet parking over, when there's over 100 people?
Well, that's something that we, we haven't really netted that out yet, but anything that would impact the property or the area negatively, then that would definitely be the term of agreement for a valet. If you had a party, if you rented it and you have 30 people, well, it makes no sense to have a valet service. So there's that, there's some number that we need to work out with to where the valet becomes mandatory.
I think.
Wouldn't it be after they use the 18 parking spaces?
That's my.
It could be something like that, sure, yeah.
Well, yeah, where the employees going to park?
Employees of whom? The caterers?
The caterers and your employees, or where do they park?
We also, well, we have agreements, we have agreements with, like Mitch over here, there's still 14 places over here that I get to use, and it's also Chuck Neri's. He and I are in agreements, right, ostensibly have 45 parking places that I've already used, but we're coming to an agreement where I'm going to maybe use 20 or 25. So there's plenty of parking.
Okay.
That's not conditioned upon approval for the 160.
I just want to make sure we get to the proper trigger point for when valet's required, within the city's control here. I know you have a lot of parking here that we don't.
What do you guys think, which should be?
Generally, like at the Casa Romana, when you have an event that exceeds, I think, their parking lot, then you go to a valet, so.
That's reasonable, yeah.
But we're not, but we need to make sure of staff that this number is appropriate to the ones we can control before that trigger sets in, I think, is the point.
So 18 times four would be the trigger, I suppose, what you're saying, right?
Yeah, which is about 60.
Four.
Sixty-four.
I'm not very good at math right now. Whatever that number is, is fine, yeah.
Not 100.
Well, no, okay, fine, yeah.
Okay, are there other questions for Mr. Kapoff or for his architect?
I just have a question, I think, for staff with regard to parking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kapoff.
I need some assistance here in figuring this out.
Okay.
Because on the attachment seven, which is streamlined valet companies, they say here, designated parking stalls, 22. Number of valet vehicles, this lot can accommodate 27, okay? The report says 22, they say 27, and then on the next page, figure two, ingress, egress of off-site lot A, they say 32. So I'm confused. Is, is the, do we have 22 spaces here? 27, 29, or 32?
You have the lesser of these. So staff doesn't count the valet parking, the increased efficiency of the valet parking is part of our analysis. It's however many stalls are provided. That way we know that's exactly how many stalls are there in case a valet is not provided for a certain event.
So there are 22?
22. 22 off-site and 18 onsite.
All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, then. We'll open the public hearing, and we have a number of cards. The first of these is from, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce this correctly, Ronnie, or Ranny, Lou, Ronnie, okay, if you'd step forward. And then after Ronnie will be Tara Fuentes. Tara, if you want to come forward and stand back in the aisle behind Ronnie, that'd be great.
Hello, I live at West Avenue to San Gabriel for the past eight years. I request the Planning Commission postpone approval for the proposed Law Ventura Event Center. I'm a professional wedding and event photographer. I'm very aware of the amount of people it takes to hold such events. The negative impact I foresee for our neighborhood is the parking and traffic. Our street is very narrow. It is a challenge to navigate and is very limited in terms of parking. I myself, as an event vendor, have parked in nearby residential streets of the venue I might be working at despite the signage posted. The Ole Hanson Beach Club capacity is only 15 more people and boasts double the parking. The vendors, staff, and catering trucks needed to host such an event alone will use all the 16 spaces provided in the back. I guess there's 18, but two of those are handicapped, so there's really 16. Where will the rest of the vendors park? Vendors of events are never allowed to use the valet service. I also witness valet staff constantly running across busy streets and at times almost getting hit. The valet staff does not wait at the crosswalks to legally walk back and forth across, across the street when they are retrieving cars. I believe is quite aware of this issue at the villa. I mean, I've worked with them, I've seen, I've seen the valet staff, I mean, especially adding all these people into a significant traffic area like Pedro's, 7-Eleven, and the liquor store. This proposes a significant increase of a major traffic accident happening. I'm also concerned about the noise. As a young mother, as a mother of young kids, an event center opens seven days a week and until midnight or possibly 1:00 a.m. is not an appropriate use of a site so close to our residential street. There is not a weekend that goes by that we are not awakened by the sound blaring from the OC Tavern or Molly Blooms. An event with 160-person capacity, catering trucks, rental trucks, vendors, and staff departing at significantly late hours. If the event hours are until 1:00 a.m., how are all the vendors and catering staff possibly going to load all their equipment prior to 10:00 p.m.? Who will enforce that? I feel like the Planning Commission will not be upholding the city's mission statement of maintaining a safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play if they approve this, this center. I think the last couple of years of development and construction of the Cotton's Point senior apartments have already altered our atmosphere on West Avenue to San Gabriel.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Tara, you'll be next, and then after Tara will be Tony Dietz, please. And Tony, if you'll come up and wait in the aisle.
Hi, my name's Tara, and I've been a homeowner on West San Gabriel for 25 years. My biggest concerns, of course, would be the traffic and parking and the noise. And the parking spots, you know, allotted onsite would not be sufficient, and the, a lot of people would use our street. That would be the easiest access for them. It'd probably make a lot of sense for them to go down our street. I live at the very end of the street. They would most likely come down, turn around, look for parking until that was filled up. And another concern that I heard you guys mentioning, and thank you for being considerate of us, but our neighbors across the way on East San Gabriel, I spoke with two of them today. They were not aware of this project going in. They are within 300 feet of the building. They are directly behind 7-Eleven. The parking lot that they're going to use for valet parking is just below the first of these houses. So, and actually, it's actually, there's the parking lot, there's a house here, a second house, a third house. I spoke with the second and third homeowners. And this building and the courtyard would be facing them, and I believe, as I think you mentioned, the noise would travel up the hill as it does. I mean, I can hear the sea lions bark at night. So, we all know that the noise does travel up the hill. They would be directly in front of this noise, and I think we would also be hearing a lot of noise. And I was surprised that it would be open seven days a week, so early in the morning till late at night. It would probably not give us much peace. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Tony Dietz, and after Tony, let's see, I think we have two people coming up together, Laura Engelmann, I can't quite read it, and Brian Johnson, if you'd come up and wait in the aisle too, please, thank you.
I have lived on San, West San Gabriel for 15 years. And just recently, we had the senior apartment building built there, and it is just starting to get filled. We don't know what the impact of that full occupancy is going to be at this point. We're anticipating that it's going to increase the traffic, and without knowing what that's already going to do to our neighborhood, I can't imagine trying to pass something that's going to need this much parking without doing some sort of study or trying to figure out how it's going to negatively impact us once that's full. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Okay, and after Laura and Brian will be Randy Dietz, please.
Hi, thank you Planning Commission for hearing us tonight. We really appreciate you listening to the residents' concerns. And just for most of us, this, we, this was the first notice that we'd received on the project. Perhaps other notices went out, but most of us were not aware of it, so.
This is the first public hearing?
First, okay, first public hearing, so this is the first time, all right, well, and the project has significantly changed. So one of the things I wanted to point out is that for many of us, we had heard that this was going to be a commercial and office building, so this is the first time we're hearing it's going to be an event center. And I think the staff report mentions that, you know, there's not really any more significant impacts with this new use, and for us as residents, that's a pretty false claim. There's really long hours, there's a lot of traffic, lot of density in terms of traffic and circulation. So when we have the most density in terms of traffic problems that we have on our street are during those weekend hours and during those evening hours. And with an, with an event center, we're looking at probably, you know, weekend events and evening hours. And then, I don't know, so with this slide, I think the other, one of the other bigger concerns for us is that you were mentioning, like, how are the cars actually going to turn around? And this space is still open going through the back of the San O, and I just, I can't imagine without someone actually standing there that caterers or vendors are, you know, are going to go, well, I know I'm not supposed to go that way, but it sure is a lot easier just to go straight through and pop out on San Gabriel and then try and turn off onto El Camino. And if you've ever tried to turn off of our street, it's also a really big challenge. The big rigs park on El Camino, so oftentimes you can't see the traffic coming from the left. If you're trying to even make a left turn, you're towing to the right. We've got the Pedro's traffic that backs up on the weekends. When there's really big weekends, July 4th, that entire corridor is totally backed up because everybody's getting off of Highway 5 trying to take that. So I think there's a lot of things to consider in terms of the congestion in the area and the way that this would actually work, especially when there would be a lot of events on weekends when most of those concerns are at the biggest, and there's a lot of accidents that happen there. A couple other things that I wanted to bring up is that for noise impacts, I appreciate that the developer tried to reduce the noise, but really, a lot of noise comes not just from the mid, the center of the event and the live music, but people don't stay inside. They congregate by their cars, they hang out outside, especially after the event. If you pass by Hoppa Jay's, OC Tavern, Ole Hanson, when events are going on, there's people standing outside. And this is where they were going to stand outside, by the entrance and by the back. And our residential homes are right there, and those, that ambient noise really, really carries. We can hear it.
This is, this is not only there, it's the wall, but this is a wooden fence, and this is a neighboring property, so it is literally.
On the property.
On the property line, with a foot barrier to plant trees to help, buffer the noise, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's noise issues, and then on top of that, we have safety concerns. It's a really hotspot for vagrants and drinking activity, right in the back of the liquor store.
Laura, I'm sorry.
I know my three minutes are up.
Yeah.
So we just, we're concerned about this being a drinking hotspot as well with activity of the event center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so after Randy Dietz will be William Yarborough, please.
My name is Randy Dietz. I've lived on San Gabriel 14 years. I think it's great that Don Kapoff has decided to develop that lot, and I think that it will definitely help the neighborhood considerably by doing a development up there. I have quite a few concerns. The ingress and egress is very unsafe as it is. When they did the senior center, they, they, the city, I guess it's the traffic department, came up with some ideas that said that there was not that much traffic, that people drove slow and all that. It is, it has improved considerably because they put a light in at the off-ramp. I still am concerned about getting in and out of there. I, I know for a fact that when people go in and out of there, they're going to go out our street. That's all there is to it. My question is, is what if they don't adhere to the rules? What if they do park up and down all our streets? What if they do go in and out of there? Is there anybody there to actually enforce any of those rules? I doubt it very seriously. If it is, if there is somebody there, the city is going to be paying for police, sheriffs that could be used better in other areas to police a private entity in a private area. The residence of our street, our street is 24 and, 24 and a half feet wide. It was originally one, one way. If there's a car parked on each side, only one vehicle can get through. People typically pull over into empty spots or driveways in order to give access to the other people coming down. There's been two emergencies recently, not super recently, but, and the emergency vehicles could not access those emergencies because of people, just the parking alone. If you snug really close to the curb, yes, you can get in there and do it, and people can get through, but if not, then it's very hard to go through. The emergency vehicles, the city paying for the stuff, the ingress and egress, the parking really is a serious thing on the street. There's maybe two spots, maybe three at night when everybody's home. This is a working neighborhood. And the change from offices to music and alcohol is actually surprising to me. I think that the, that Don coming up with a good idea for this thing is great, but I think that you should review it and make some changes in order to suit the residents who are actually the core of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, can I ask him one question?
Sure.
Randy, I'm sorry. Mr. Dietz, you said you were afraid of them getting in and out, or you getting in and out, I think is what you meant.
Yes.
Are you talking about your street or their driveway?
Well, their driveway is not there yet. That will be, believe me, that will be very, very hard to deal with. My street as it is, is dangerous to get in and out of.
Okay, I mean, their long driveway coming off of El Camino Real.
When they pull out of that driveway, they're going to have to only go right, of course, because you can't turn into a left turn pocket to make a left, because there is a turn pocket that goes up El Camino. So they're only going to be able to go right, and that corner is a blind corner. There's about five driveways in a row over there, starting with San O Tire. This will be the next one, the liquor store, Spanish Village, and then the gas station, all bunched up into one thing. The other thing I didn't address is, is at this point right now, a substantial amount of people that work at Spanish Village use our street and the back driveway to access their work, their offices. The reason for that is, is because if you come down El Camino, you slow down and you make a right into Chuck Neri's Spanish Village, cars come at a high rate of speed down the street, and it's on a blind corner.
Do you know of any accidents on that street?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, absolutely. Somebody was killed recently two blocks away.
Just last year, right into the light bulb and the head.
Okay, all right, all right. So you're concerned with your street, but also that driveway?
Right, but the driveway's not in yet, and at this point, they have to figure out, you know, what they're going to do with that.
Okay.
But I am absolutely concerned with traffic entering and exiting our street because it's now, it will not just be the residents using it. It's going to be everybody who's not told not to or whatever.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dietz. Okay, William Yarborough, and then after Mr. Yarborough, Janelle, I think it's Mercero, please.
Hi, I'm Will Yarborough. I've been a resident on San Gabriel, West San Gabriel for 15 years, and I believe that this project is the totally wrong venue for our neighborhood. My house gets the full brunt of any kind of noise that comes from the project, and there's no way of keeping doors closed when, and people are really loud when they talk, and you can hear that, and that's just going to take away all our happiness as a way of having a nice, quiet neighborhood. And the parking, just talking about the valet parking, there's going to be a line of cars at the time of the event pulling in and trying to negotiate back out, and then after the event, there's going to be another line of cars, and it's just going to be a totally safe and unsafe environment for everybody involved. And, and people that know where the event is, they're not going to bother with coming into parking lot. They're going to find a spot on a neighboring street, and that's going to be our street. And if they park on our street, they can park there because it's public parking and nobody can say anything to them. So there's not going to be any kind of, you know, policing the area for the event guests to find parking. This is going to be a valet service, and, and nobody's going to want to deal with having to wait with that. I know, I know, people go to events and they, they just want to make it as easy as possible for themselves. And I think it's just the wrong venue. We'd like to see something there. We like the idea of a coffee shop with a business on top. That would sounded good, but this is just the totally wrong event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarborough. Okay, after Janelle will be, I think it's Shoshana Reynolds, please.
My name is Janelle McCrill, and I want to thank the commission for all your comments.
My name is Janelle Mercero and I want to thank the commission for all your comments and questions. I feel like we're very well represented. I've never been to one of these, but I'm pleased as a voter. Um, I'd just like to say that my house is at Four West, I am the top property. I look directly into these parking lots. I've lived at my residence for 14 years. At my home, my husband Matt Mercero lives there, Brittany Mercero lives there, she's 13 years old, Julia Mercero lives there, she's 11 years old, Jeremy Mercero lives there, he's eight years old, and Julian Mercero lives there and he's six years old. So there are four children living not just within 300 feet of this facility and the courtyard and the drinking element and the loitering. Um, I think my house is a calculated distance of approximately 150 feet. Um, and because there are children that live in my home, the main concerns I want to bring before the commission today have to do with life and limb and my concern for that. Um, I'm aware of the police activity that is currently existing in, uh, in that parking lot. Police use that extensively. Uh, we need to take into consideration as a city, the impacts of the Border Patrol activity as the exit of Avenue to Magdalena is used by people who are running from the border police and, and there are high, uh, speed things that take place. The people come out of cars out of Magdalena and have come in that Spanish Village. And we also have, uh, police activity because they monitor for bums that live in the trough behind the residences of San Gabriel and behind the new, newly constructed, uh, rez- uh, elderly center and the Spanish Village. There is a gate there and the police sit back there behind that liquor store to keep drunk and disorderly safe so that they're not hit by cars on El Camino Real at night, so that, um, there's not loitering, heroin use. We used to have three meth houses on our street, those have been cleared out as the city's well aware. As, uh, I've been with my parents here in this town and went to San Clemente High School and Concordia all the way through. We're aware of some of the negative impacts to our community in the south area with the gang-related things. We have several motels in the area. Uh, a lot of people come to the motels who have just recently gotten out of jail, uh, people stay there, they're not just one-night motels, they can be long-term. Why do I bring that to your attention? Because it increases the amount of foot traffic. 7-Eleven and Pedro's Tacos are high-traffic activities and especially late at night, it attracts a different kind of population. The street over behind the condos that goes back behind there, I don't know the name of that street, if you guys know what I'm talking, if you turn left, it's Comercial or something, that is a crime area. It needs to be taken into consideration. The police sheriff, um, car sits behind that Spanish Village right now, two or three in the morning, every, you know, two, two times a month, patrolling for our crime and things like that. So I want us to take into consideration life and limb and I don't want to see anybody get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Uh, next will be Shoshana and after Shoshana will be Brenda Miller.
Thank you very much. Uh, Shoshana Reynolds, I'm a 10-year resident on, uh, West San Gabriel, live there with my husband and daughter. Of course, our biggest concerns is the parking and the traffic at this point. Um, I invite all of you to come down on a Monday and see trash delivery because that is a pretty good example of how we maneuver weekly on that street. Um, in addition, I, for employment, I am a director of events, very well aware of what impact this event center will have. As far as the late nights, the, uh, noise ordinance is very much a concern because I still didn't really hear how we're going to manage that. Um, so again, that is a very huge concern for us. Keep it brief, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Brenda, it's the last card I have. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter, please fill out a card and come forward.
Hi, Erin, I'm not, um, here to actually take a position for or against the project, but rather just to remind the planning commission of the new mobility element, the bicycle pedestrian master plan and the candidate projects that are included in that now adopted award-winning plan. Uh, South El Camino Real was, um, designated as the city's first traffic calming infrastructure project. We will probably go forward with soliciting grant money in order to solve many of the concerns that are being raised, not only here tonight, but I think everywhere throughout the old part of town is the speed of traffic, uh, you know, blind curves, dangerous to pedestrians. So I'd like to ask that you also, you know, view this project and all subsequent projects through sort of a different transportation lens. So again, it's, I am not here to opine upon the neighborhood concerns.
Brenda, when you, when you're asking us to look at it through a different transportation lens, can you expound on that a bit for us?
Um, with respect to the concerns about how to, the ingress and egress to this project as well as the ingress and egress to, um, the primary residential street that we're talking about, there are all sorts of, um, traffic calming, cutting-edge, complete streets types of infrastructure. One of those could be roundabout, they reduce collisions between pedestrians and cars by 75 to 80% according to Caltrans. Federal Highway Administration has a webpage dedicated to proven safety countermeasures and the candidate project that we have and the new mobility element, um, uses many of those proven safety countermeasures in order to solve many of the concerns that are being expressed here tonight and really are ubiquitous throughout many communities across the country. So that, I just wanted to remind you, there are solutions and I, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to begin to look at transportation from a complete streets perspective rather than strictly an automobile perspective. Um, as time goes on, we will be embracing more and more non-motorized travel. So whether that affects your parking requirement, that's really not something I'm opining upon, but nevertheless, let's remember that there is that complete streets perspective that we're now, um, embracing for the future officially.
Brenda, I think Kathy has a question for you as well.
I do.
I'm glad you're here.
The bicycle and pedestrian master plan was the last thing I was supposed to grab on my way out the door because it, it did occur to me, how would this use affect our plan for that corridor and for the complete streets? Because we were talking about narrowing El Camino Real.
Right.
So I would like you to talk about that, um, with this added impact.
All right, well, El Camino Real is two lanes in each direction with multiple turn pockets. Sometimes there's a center turn lane across sections of El Camino Real. The wider a street is, the more dangerous it is for pedestrians to cross. Um, one of the proven safety countermeasures is called a road diet. Um, that involves removing one-vehicle travel lane from each direction, have wide sidewalks and bicycle lanes, and then your regulation for the intersections becomes a roundabout. When you do that, it becomes automatically safer for everyone and it actually increases the efficiency of travel for the motorist because the motorist never has to stop unless there is a pedestrian in their path or in the crosswalk. That's, that is the future and that, the degree to which we embrace those concepts will directly impact our capacity for economic revitalization and economic development. They are intricately linked. The more motor vehicle dependent we are, the more constrained we will become to entertain land use options. So did that answer your question?
Are you talking about a roundabout at that intersection?
Possibly, possibly. Um, now, before any heads get shaken, um, there are roundabouts in Orange County. The orange traffic circle is not a roundabout. It is not what we're talking about. Um, in Irvine, off of Sand Canyon, there are the Quail Hill Roundabouts. Those things are beautifully designed, they have splitter islands, and what those features do is that they change the culture of the roadway such that no one mode of travel has the, um, preconceived idea that they have dominant right of way. There's a more egalitarian sharing of the public space. Um, another great example is down in La Jolla, they have multiple roundabouts in La Jolla. And that has made tremendously positive impacts for public space in those areas. They are, again, federal highway administration proven safety countermeasures. Now, our traffic engineers are going to have to study this more completely, but my opinion is just to let's also remember the complete streets perspective as we entertain land use issues, um, traffic and congestion problems, et cetera.
Thank you, Brenda.
All right, thanks.
What, did you have a question, Brenda?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But Madam Chair, before you close the pub- public testimony, um, we were informed either that there's some sort of an agreement or an understanding with Spanish Village. And, um, I was unaware of that. In fact, I, I had heard just the opposite. So I don't know if the owner of Spanish Village is here this evening, but if, if he is, um-
I see him.
If, oh, if he is, I'd like to, if he's able to come up and discuss that because, um-
And, and just in the interest of full disclosure, when I made my site visit this afternoon, I did stop by to talk to Mr. Neri about that issue.
Okay.
Chuck, would you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Chuck Neri, uh, I'm one of the owners of the Spanish Village, uh, adjacent to the, uh, project at hand. And if you have some questions, I wasn't, uh-
Well, my question is, is there, is there an agreement at this point between you and, and this owner with regard to, um, parking and that?
There is an agreement, uh, in progress, you might say. We haven't really-
Well, you, you say you've not finalized an agreement.
We have not finalized an agreement. We are addressing concerns relative to all the things that have been discussed, parking on our site, uh, traffic flow, et cetera. And, uh, we're trying to come up with some formula that, um, you know, that would make sense. Uh, we are particularly, I mean, we, we do have the existing agreement and, uh, obviously our concern with the existing agreement is that, uh, he certainly has rights. We have shared parking, uh, and we want to be sure that, uh, he doesn't overrun our tenants and ourselves with, uh, the parking there. And so that's kind of what we're working on. I, I've heard tonight some, some other concerns frankly that I didn't think of, but, uh, but that was our main focus as far as working with Don.
All right, thank you.
Jim?
Yes, um, the agreement that you're currently working on, is that an agreement with, with city would be a third party to that agreement? Because it sounds like you've got an agreement now, the city is not a party two, and that's why we can't sort of count those spaces in this, uh-
Correct. No, the, uh, we're thinking of a, a new agreement, uh, it would not be the third-party agreement. Uh, we, we don't want to be, um, restricting ourselves to, to some unknown, you know, unknown period in the future.
So any new agreement still would not include the city?
Correct. And we, once, once he had apparently enough parking to make, you know, to satisfy the city, then, uh, we realized that we, it, it left more flexibility for us to come up with some, uh, some formula that would make sense for, for us and, and that's what we're working on currently.
Thank you.
Kathy?
One last one.
Yes.
What, in your mind, how is it that his patrons will not be parking and affecting your, your tenants? Are you going to mark the spaces?
Yeah, I think, uh, that's, yeah, I think that's one option. We, we probably would have to, you know, use signage similar to what, uh, some lots have done behind, you know, on Del Mar, but on the, uh, on the lots, uh, definitely would be part of that, that solution.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no one else who wishes to speak and seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Amber, if, if you would come back up and, um, uh, answer some questions for us and we may need the help of your applicant, uh, for some of these. Um, one of the, uh, one of the issues that was raised was, uh, the issue of vendor parking and, um, also the, the truck loading and unloading and the timing of that. Is that something that you can answer for us or is that something that, um, you need the applicant for?
I can tell you the way the city has conditioned other projects in the neighborhood, or I shouldn't say in the neighborhood, but within our community that are directly adjacent to residential uses as well. Uh, the conditions of approval and basically best practices that staff has included are the same that we include for, uh, event facilities like the casino that are also directly adjacent to residential uses. And the way that has been managed in, for those facilities, which is how we've conditioned this facility, if it were to be approved to go forward, is that after 10 o'clock, in this case, um, the casino, for example, it's later, it's midnight, but given how close the residents are in this one, we did limit it to, um, 10 o'clock, that any event vendors that need to load after that time are required to come back in the morning to load, which is why we have till 7:00 AM. You cannot do anything, um, earlier than that as far as loading to be in conformance with the city's noise ordinance.
And what about the, um, uh, the parking of those trucks? Will they be taking up, um, some of the, the parking that's allocated to the guests?
Well, in the back area, you have a, in this area right here, you have a loading zone for, um, presumably the food caterer and I can't tell what that, that difference is, but it is assumed that the food caterer will probably be parking there during the time of the event. Um, there is not a condition of approval for employees to use the off-site parking. In looking at the parking, we just looked at it in a holistic type fashion. Um, but if that is a concern, that employees are taking up the parking, in that parking lot, we can't include a condition of approval requiring them to park across the street during their events.
Okay, and the, um, uh, but the, but there is a space for the, for the truck itself, for a truck itself?
Yes, there is a large area here that's designated for, um, uh, caterers back there adjacent to the kitchen.
Okay, and then on, um, there, some of the commissioners brought up and then some of the, um, uh, the speakers also brought up concerns for East San Gabriel. Uh, and of course, there were concerns, uh, from the west side of San Gabriel as well about, uh, noise. Did you at any point discuss a noise study with your applicant and is the applicant open to that?
With the site design and the applicant being admissible to not having amplified sound on the patio, staff did not believe that a noise, uh, study was required. We could ask the applicant if he would be open to doing the noise study and we conditioned the project to comply with the city's noise ordinance.
Okay. And, um, then also, uh, there were a number of people who were concerned about people congregating outside, um, after, uh, closing or during, uh, during the event. Uh, I know that, uh, some of our other projects have been conditioned, uh, to require onsite security. Um, what are, what's the approach for security for this, um, uh, this property?
Staff has included a condition of approval that requires that, um, within a half an hour of the event ending, that the premises shall be vacated by all customers and within an hour, the vendors need to be gone off the site as well. Um, but as far as, uh, we, the conditions do not include the requirement for a security guard onsite. It would be, uh, management's responsibility to adhere to the conditions for operating the premises.
Okay. Um, and then this, I think, is a question for Zach. Uh, there was a question about, um, uh, turning left and that it was not possible to turn left, uh, because there was a pocket. Thank you, Amber.
Um, my understanding is it'll be a four-way intersection, they'll be able to turn left, go right, go straight in any direction. Obviously, there's a left turn pocket, you can go past that pocket and go north. There's two lanes to turn into, so.
Um, it sounds like some, some of the commissioners are not-
Unless I misunderstood the question.
Yeah.
If you're exiting this site, my understanding is you'll be able to turn left. You'll have a, a, a green, you'll be in control of the intersection when your light turns green, just like any other intersection.
So you're looking at turning in this, I'm sorry.
It's a four-way intersection, correct. And it's up to the applicant to upgrade the, the traffic intersection to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
So that won't be, that won't be an issue then?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. So the new signal will take-
The question I have is there, is there a light coming out of this?
Correct. He is responsible for adding that fourth segment to the current three-way intersection at his cost.
Okay, and, um, and I'm sorry, Amber, this is for you again. I, thank you. Thank you, Zach. Um, also, um, is it possible, uh, there were a number of people who are concerned about people, uh, taking egress, um, onto West San Gabriel. Is it possible to, um, uh, chain off the, um, access to that point or would, um, can that, uh, egress not be blocked in any way?
That is not the applicant's property. Are, are you talking about from his property? It's part of the existing, um, access agreement that has to be-
It has to be open.
-a free-flow area in, in that.
Okay, so there's no way that that could, that could be blocked to prevent egress? It just has to be a policy issue, um, uh, as that, as you've addressed in the, um, in the pamphlets and that sort of thing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Could that be some consideration for that, uh, joint approval that they're going to work out that we, the city can request them to, you know, for vents? Put a sawhorse barricade up on, so that it can't do that because of fire or whatever?
It, it's a private agreement.
Okay. I do have a question though on condition number nine, which is the hours here, Amber, and that, uh, crewed hours are 8:00 AM to midnight seven days a week, extended hours to 1:00 AM on holidays, but then customers will vacate premises within 30 minutes after a minute completion, so I guess that's 1:30, but all indoor activities and cleanup will cease and all the vendors will, will, uh, egress by 1:00 AM. So we have a, a timing situation here with condition nine. here with condition nine. When people stop, when they leave, and when they egress is a mismatcher that I knew we have to address, but then, is the applicant, like the Casa de Ramonica, because of nearby residents, everything has to end at 10 o'clock versus midnight and 1:00?
Including cleanup?
The casino can go to midnight because of their location down there, I think, but the Casa de Ramonica, which has valet parking, also has to end at 10 o'clock because of the residents next door. That's the way we conditioned that area. So that wasn't considered by staff at all due to the residents around the area?
It was, and the casino on special events is allowed to stay open until 1:00. We basically copied this condition from the casino, given the types of events and the proximity to the residents, even though this is a smaller venue than the casino.
Are there any other questions?
I have one last one. Page two, saying interpretation, that we, I'm asking if we have to make it, section 17.04.040, says the proposed use is as restrictive as the use to which it is being compared in terms of impacts to traffic, parking, dust, noise, or other negative impacts. Is this an interpretation we have to make from the prior approval?
No, this is an interpretation in regard to the wall only, the courtyard wall only, not to the entire project.
Oh.
It's just...
I did not read it as that.
So that is a finding for specifically the interpretation of the courtyard wall?
No, it, okay. That makes sense, because I was trying to compare it to the office use and building before. That's the way I took that. Okay. So that is the only interpretation we're being asked to make is for that wall?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions for me, there are a couple notes that I took that staff's happy to address. I spoke to Zach Ponton in regards to the pedestrian crosswalk to address you, Mr. Agelson, about two points of crossing. And as part of that four-way stop, they are looking at having a pedestrian access on that side as well, so that would be included.
I'm sorry, say that again, Amber?
Let me point right here. So Zach, they're looking or researching to putting a pedestrian crosswalk on this side as well. That was a question that Mr. Agelson had. So you had only one street crossing as opposed to the two across El Camino and West Avenue, or East Avenue to San Gabriel. The other one is, that staff was well aware of the traffic concerns in the parking in this area. With the design, site design that we came up with, with requiring the traffic signal, that was very important to us because we did feel that that was actually going to be a more preferable ingress and egress for people to use, and because of the blind intersection in that area, we thought that would be a much safer and attractive point of access for the patrons visiting this establishment. And we have also, in speaking with one of the residents on the block, traffic and parking problems have existed well before this project, and even the new Cotton Points project, which is not included. So we have asked them to get in contact with Tom Frank, so that way he can go out and visit the site and see what types of improvements can be made regardless of this project in order to help assist them out there.
It's a good proactive approach, because as the commission knows from the Cotton's Point project, this neighborhood does have a lot of traffic and parking impacts. All right, thank you, Amber. Okay, I'm wondering if we might want to start with the interpretation, because that's not an issue that necessarily is impacted by the discussion points that the public has brought forward today. So perhaps we could discuss that, see where we sit on that, and then move on to the CUP, which is, I think, going to require some more detailed discussion. Anybody want to start on the interpretation?
I'll reach and kick off. I think I'll kind of key off Bart's earlier comments that, oh, it might be a slight stretch. It does fit with the area. It does extend, it does drop the building back, which could, you know, by rights in that area, be a zero setback, a zero lot line setback. So I think I agree with this interpretation. I think when I looked over the proposal compared to what was brought forward to us, you know, way last fall, when he downsized the project considerably, and that we were asked to consider that setback then. So I think this actually, from that aspect, enhances the project from, if we consider our walk around the neighborhood we had about a week ago, where downtown, we see a lot of zero lot lines, you know, in the commercial district. So I think I could support this interpretation.
Okay, thank you. Bart?
Yeah, I think Dawn said it very well. And so the public knows, the two interpretations we have to make is the proposed use is similar in nature to the listed use in terms of function, and that's just for the wall out front. And the proposed use is as restrictive as the use to which it is being compared, and I think the wall does meet those findings. And I think those two findings are, I would agree with, and except...
Kathy?
I think the only interpretation that I couldn't make, I still think that's a stretch. It's a 12-foot wall. I don't think it's pedestrian. It is four feet off the sidewalk. But I can't, I don't think I could make that finding that it's the same use as the building was there for noise. I think it would be increased. If the building was there and it was totally an inside use, it would be quieter. Is that the interpretation?
Well, I don't think we're really looking at the use behind it. I think we're just looking at the wall itself. The use will be under the conditional use permit, I think. This is just an interpretation of what a wall is and would it be allowed in that location.
But unfortunately, it says the word noise in there for me. It's included. So I'm, you know, I'm just saying that I think that's a consideration when we're trying to say that this is a continuation of the building. It is an open area.
Can you clarify that for us, Amber?
So just to kind of read for the benefit of everyone here and kind of reiterate, so if we were to fill in the word "wall" for the word "use,"
Okay.
So the proposed wall is as restrictive as if a wall to which it is being compared in regards to a wall to a building. In terms of impacts of traffic, the wall would not create traffic, parking, dust, noise, or other negative impacts. So this wall is not going to create noise. It's not going to create dust, and it's not going to...
So we're not looking at the use?
No, it is just solely the structure.
Okay.
So Kathy, do you know how you feel about the interpretation at this, or do you need more time to think? Well, some of the other commissioners share their thoughts.
Well, one thing that I could say on this use with the wall, the way it is, and this increased travel of cars and people in this area, I'm having a trouble with the fact that it's a own neighborhood commercial, which should be commercial, neighborhood-serving businesses, retail, all of that. I do understand that this is a visitor, we want to welcome visitors into this zone. It's supposed to be the surf zone, but it's not serving the community at all, I think. And so to me, when adding this 12-foot wall in the front, it's going to look like a wall to people. It's not going to look like part of the building, I don't believe, perception-wise. And I just, it's, to me, it's not neighborhood commercial. So I'm having a hard time with just this use being that, because it's an event center to bring other people into this area. But it's not sharing with the other retail uses and contributing to that pedestrian zone.
Okay, so your position is that you don't feel that it's an accessory structure, and therefore, they would not be entitled to a 12-foot wall, that the wall height limit then would be six feet?
Yes, I would agree to that.
Okay. Jim?
Am I...
Is your light on?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm having trouble seeing it.
Sorry. Yeah, my reading of this, the CUP and the architectural issues aside, just looking at this as a, as an accessory structure, I think one of the main things from the interpretation is, is that they could have the wall of a building there, right? And so is this any more restrictive than that? And then the answer is no. This is no more restrictive than if they had, you know, say, a two-story building and a zero lot line setback. In fact, it's less, much less restrictive than that. So based on that, I think that, you know, just looking at that interpretation, it's, yes, it's an accessory structure, because it's not any more restrictive, like much less restrictive than the zero lot line building wall would be, and then it doesn't add anything, any negative effects to the parking, to the circulation, that sort of a thing. So, you know, I would be, I don't think I have a problem making that finding.
Okay.
Amber, could you bring the street gate up for that part of that wall? You know, you're at El Camino Real, and you're, that's it?
Sorry.
Right there. So that's the wall we're talking about, right?
That's correct. This front wall right here is what we're talking about.
With the trees and landscaping and the architectural...
Exactly, and it's just this span here. This is the building behind. It's just this span.
Can you clarify, though, on this elevation? If you look all the way to the left, there's a lot of trees there. Where is the driveway?
The driveway is here. So it comes in and it goes to the left this way and comes up against that perple...
So those trees are truly not there?
No, they are.
There's a put across here.
So let's go back to the plan. So see how this curves? There is a 10-foot wide arcade here, and there are landscape pockets with trees located in front of them along that. So you have a landscaped edge here. So this is the width of the wall along the front property line, and with the landscaping following in this area, and this area, and this area.
Thank you, Amber. Appreciate it.
So Wayne or Michael, you want to weigh in on the interpretation?
When, it shows the interpretation here, section 17.04.040. And if it's specifically to the wall, because I read it much differently, to say the least, in my review when I was studying this. I don't have a problem with the wall, okay? But when we get into conditions, the other conditions, I have a lot of other further comments.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Wayne. Michael?
The way I read this is I agree that the wall's an accessory building, and it's okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm also comfortable with the interpretation that this is an accessory structure, and therefore, they would be entitled to the taller wall. So I would be comfortable with that as well. So, and well, there's one resolution, so I'm just trying to kind of look at each item along the way. So it looks like that would have general support. Okay, all right, let's get into discussion then on the conditional use permit. Who would like to start that off? Wayne, to the conditional use permit? Go ahead, Wayne.
Oh, all right. I like to view these projects as if I also lived in the neighborhood. And I think that's very important. And I'm very familiar with this area, because several years ago, when I was in the council, we talked about the senior center and the problems that we had with the senior center. And I really went down to this area quite often to take a look at the parking and the traffic. And I must tell you, this is a hotbed of problems with regard to parking and traffic in this area. And I really feel that this particular use is too intense for this specific area. I'm disappointed that our traffic engineer's not here this evening, because there's a lot of questions with regard to traffic. For example, with the crosswalk. The ingress and egress here is just, to me, a real problem. If you're going to have 160 people come in, you're going to have maybe 100 cars come in. And you're going to have them coming in, and then you're going to have them coming out the same way, and it's going to be a traffic nightmare within the site itself, not only the site itself, but also in the intersection. And there's nothing in the, well, I'm not going to be able to support this project, but there's nothing in there as a condition for a valet service. And, but it's not conditioned. And there's no noise study. I must tell you that those people on the upside hill, they are going to hear this, and they're going to hear it loud. And I think that one of the most important things in this city for us is the health and safety of this community. And I'm not going to be able to make that finding. So I'm not going to be able to support this project.
Wayne, are there any modifications or any additional conditions that could alter the project such that you could be supportive? For example, if we did condition it to have a noise study, or have some other types of adjustments to the parking, having the employees required to park off-site, that sort of thing, or additional modifications to the hours or site security? Would those, would any of those things change your feeling about the project?
I think until...
I don't mean those specifically, the things of that nature.
Yeah, I know. No, I know that. I think it's, I think this project is a real stretch for this neighborhood, and until such time as there's more reciprocal agreements between the adjacent landowners here, I think, and even though it's not, the city's not going to be a third party in it, I think it's important that those occur. But I think this particular project is just going to be a huge stretch for this area, for the health and safety of this neighborhood. And so I'm just not going to be able to support it because of the intensification of its use.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jim?
Yeah, I think we do have to put ourselves in the shoes of the residents. I think we also need to put ourselves in the shoes of the applicant, and also in the shoes of the people, other people who are going to be doing ancillary uses around, you know, the facility as well. And I'm struggling with this one a bit. I think there's a lot of, some different things pulling at me. It feels like a bit of a stretch. I don't know if it's too far of a stretch yet. In terms of the parking, I feel for the residents. I live in North Beach, so I have similar situations with parking and difficulty with that. But it is public parking, and so available to all. I suspect that in many of these instances, the residents will have already parked there before an event starts. I, but I still worry about that for the residents and people sort of driving down the street, coming back up, looking for a place and not finding one, because they perhaps don't want to use the valet parking. I think we, I think with the valets, it was good to hear that there's going to be a four-way stop. I was very, or they're considering a four-way light. I'm concerned about that. But I would feel more comfortable is if, you know, if this came back to us, because as the traffic commission, to look at the final decision for what should happen in that intersection, because we're talking about significant changes to that intersection and that neighborhood. And I think, you know, one way or another, we should be taking a look at that and saying, well, how is that going to affect things? Wayne, I agree with you. I saw the same thing about the valets crossing the street. As soon as I saw that, I thought, well, every valet I know, they're running back, you know, because they've got work to do. And if we, at least if we've got that one, it sounds like they're looking at you doing a straight crosswalk or along there instead of two for the valet. That's going to help. But there are also a lot of curb cuts on that area. I, when I first opened the plan, I thought, oh, no, another curb cut in that area. That's a problem. And then I understand why we have the curb cut. It's a way to try and protect the residents there more. But if there's one there, and, you know, six more within the next, you know, 50 yards or 100 yards down the street, you know, that's an issue for El Camino Real. It's a tough area. That said, I also think, you know, we've got a vacant lot there, and some of the crime that I think is, that we see there is a result of the vacant lots. That's what we see in these vacant lots, especially in South El Camino Real, is it's kind of a magnet for bad stuff to happen. So, you know, building something nice there, a place where there's going to, you know, be people and have things going on, legal things going on, that's kind of, that's an opportunity to push out some of the issues that are going on. So like I said, I'm really torn here. I tend to, what, oh, one more thing. Some of the things that they're looking at doing look to me a lot like what we're already doing at the casino. And to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, to my knowledge, we don't get any complaints around the casino right now. There's homes right across the street, you know, in approximately the same... you know, in approximately the same, same distance. And I don't think we've had any complaints. And they have an outdoor courtyard, they have live music. Is that true? We're not really getting complaints from the casino?
As far as being the North Beach liaison, I don't have access to code enforcement, but typically I am informed about complaints in that area. I have not heard of any, but I can't say that, no, there's, has never been a complaint, but-
There's no epidemic of complaints.
No.
We've had some issues with issuing the, our SAPs and people, neighbors coming in and talking about particular issues, and we've been able to work them out. But I wouldn't say, it's fair to say we've had no complaints, and people have had concerns. We've limited the hours based on some of those complaints.
Okay. I, I do think that we would need to put something in as, as what you introduced with the valets. At some limit, we should require valets. If there is no parking, you have to use the valets. I think a sound study would not be, would not be asking too much. I, I suspect with the walls and the existing traffic on there, it's going to be okay. But given the fact that there's existing residences there and up on the, up on the hill, that may be a condition that we want to add as well. That might make us more comfortable in terms of, you know, approving it or coming back and, you know, before we approve, come back and see what the results of the sound study are. But those are basically my feelings with this at this point. I'd like to, I'm interested in hearing if there's other, if people have other perspectives for or against, because I'm looking for, I'm looking for more information still.
Bart, and then Kathy, you're next.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm not inherently opposed to the, the use here. But I have to say, to make the finding for the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding land uses, I don't have enough information. I think it would require a sound study, which we talked about doing for the rooftop grill, same thing. I would need the traffic engineer to bless this. I would want to know whether or not the sidewalk, or the crosswalk is definitely going in. I would need to know whether or not this back alley is in fact a fire lane, and I don't know if the architect knows for sure or not. Because that would restrict any barricades being put up during the use that could block traffic from going on to the adjacent sites. And I would think that might be something that's very important, to make this function in a way that doesn't affect the adjacent use, or the, the neighbors. So I'm of the opinion, I'm not opposed to the project, but I can't make an educated, a determination on the conditional use permit until I know those items.
Okay. Kathy?
Bart, thank you for saying that, because I totally would agree. Hearing that Tom is now going to take a look at this intersection a little more closely, I think we needed that beforehand. With the traffic going into Pedro's Tacos, I'm really concerned with that and coming out, only because, you know, we all go there, we know how it is. This is a very small intersection. I think the people, I'm concerned with the residents. I think the people are, the parking is not figured out well enough yet. And I think people will be parking wherever they can find a place and not necessarily using the valet. If I was going to a wedding there, I probably wouldn't. I'd find somewhere to park and I'd walk in, because I wouldn't want to hassle that narrow driveway, you know, getting in and out of there. So, you know, it's confusing. In our report, it says, you know, that people are going to be self-parking, but then there's going to have valet parking too, and they're going to give pamphlets to people to tell them where they can park, you know, ahead of the wedding, patrons, people like that, whatever event is there. So that, to me, is confusing. I, I just, I don't see enough yet to see that this is going to work and not impact the neighborhood with all the vehicles and people. And especially the noise, too. I think that we need to look at that. And we didn't hear from anyone in East San Gabriel, so I am not sure that they actually got noticed positively. I, I think everyone said they were from West San Gabriel that came here today. I wrote that down. So that concerns me, too. But I think we're not looking at the other uses, and it's very concentrated in here, and I think that this is going to be a problem. So I won't be able to support the conditional use permit based on that. Don?
Yeah, I'm kind of following in line with Bart here. I think, I think the applicant has made an awful lot of work since we saw it last fall, and when we had to continue it for the, the conditions they had then in the traffic. He's downsized the project considerably, overhyped it. He has a lot of great features. He's attempted to reach out with the city for alternative parking solutions. He's gone a long way. This area, I know there's concern with intensification, but the same token, this type of architecture is going to help the area. And, and, and South El Camino Real is an area we want to boost up in our, in our focus areas. And this is in that transition zone down there in the surf zone. And this is, has a lot of, of positive capability or potential. But I don't think we're quite there yet for some of the other conditions. I'm, the condition of approval here on the valet, parking needs to be worked at, you know, the trigger points of when it's required, and when it's not. The hours of, I think the hours of operation have to be worked. Okay, maybe at a New Year's party, or very specify, specific time, but the rest of the time, like the Casa Romanica, it's kind of like closed to town. But the condition of approval number nine, when it shuts down, when the vendors leave and everything, we have stack up of hours, and I think that needs to be worked. Condition seventeen, which is your valet parking services, I think is incomplete. It just says, "The valet parking service shall not park vehicles on residential streets. Shall utilize onsite El Camino Real ingress, egress, two shuttle cars. The valet booth shall not impact onsite." Well, we need to specify the advert test, the when they need it, where they go, a little more definitively, I think. And I think I also agree with the noise study. And ultimately, with the concerns of the small neighborhood, once, once the parking agreements agreed to that the city's not a part of and more finalized, I think I'd feel a little more comfortable in supporting. So I would, obviously, just a continuance until they will go off and work some of these, these issues. I think he's done a lot of work to get there. I think it would be helpful in so many ways. But I think we need to get a little more information so we can protect the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Jim?
Yeah, and Amber, another question for you. You've been doing so good the last two days, so.
[laughing]
The, is my memory correct that when the casino started to do events again, they initially got, had a limited number of permits per year and had to apply for specific event permits? And over a period of a couple few years, they started to be able to get their, their permits from, in a longer spaces of time, as there were a limited number of complaints and that sort of thing?
They still currently operate under special activity permits of fifteen events per year. They're limited to that.
Interesting.
Okay. And so what would this be, so, so they have fifteen events per year, and here we're saying these guys could have fifteen, seven events per week. Is that correct?
The casino has the option to also apply for a conditional use permit if they wanted to have more events than that per year. But they have not decided to hold more than that amount of events per year, which is why they have not gone after a conditional use permit.
Okay. So that, that may be something to consider as well as to limit, provide, instead of seven days a week, provide some other kind of limitation.
Some break-even point that he needs to make his investment work versus the number of times. I mean, he has to make that economic decision. We're not here to do that, but-
I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's part of-
But I, but I'm, I'm actually agreeing with you, Don, that maybe, possibly continuing to a date certain, addressing some of these issues, getting a study done, maybe looking into, into event permit type of situation. That might all be things to, you know, to do. Because, because I, I agree with you. This is actually, in terms of the architecture and the, you know, and what it's going to do for that area, could be, could be very good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, one more point to make in a way. I, originally, he had a, a commercial activity to go in here that was approved many years ago. I remember we, we kind of scrambled two, three years ago when the permit was about to run out, and we did a whole effort to change our code so people can now, you know, apply and extend their permits up to five years. I think this site drove that whole change. And so I, he's changed his business model here for, for a reason. And I kind of agree, in the commercial business center absorption rate along El Camino Real, we kind of have an excess in some areas where we haven't fully absorbed things. And also, event centers in town are kind of a demand-based situation. The golf course now, the new, the new operator there, the restaurant, he doesn't even serve dinner. It's breakfast and lunch, and he has, he has other groups there. But his big moneymaker over there is weddings, because of that outdoor wedding facility.
It added to it.
And so you have a hard time. They're, they're doing quite well with that venue over there just down the street. And then you have the Casa, you have the casino, and of course, the Old Hanson Beach Club is kind of out of the loop right now. But so you have a, I think he senses a demand for this, which is something would probably not be an empty building like we have up by the Presbyterian Church, you know, mixed use up there, or some other, the Keighley Building we looked at a few months ago. I remember I walked that for, for, we had a massage parlor or some physical therapy thing going, and you looked at that beautiful building, all that parking over there on North El Camino Real, and it's probably over half empty. So there's a, I think there's a business absorption problem up and down El Camino Real, if I sense that. So I can understand why he's going this direction. I think we have to go this direction carefully when we, once again in San Clemente, consider the tightness of the neighborhood. So that's why I'd really like to encourage something that could help the area out and get the bums out, and get El Commercial in the area like the surf zone's going to help, and that little street down there that the young lady mentioned. Because we do have a crime problem down in that area a little further south. So I, I'd like to encourage this to come together. But I think we just need to sharpen it up a little bit, and we need to address some of the concerns that the other commissioners have had. So I, that's why I, I'm favoring, you know, a continuance. Thank you.
Michael, you wish, are your thoughts?
Well, I had a look-see headed on this project, because when it was beaches, parks, and rec, we made a determination of this golf course site is workable parking for the project. And so I remember going to the site and figuring out how that was going to be done with retaining walls, and it seemed very workable. But, but when I was there, I also walked around the site, and it occurred to me that this site is problematic. I mean, really problematic. And while the use is intriguing, I, I like the idea of an event center, and maybe I like the idea of it in and around this area. But I don't like it on the site. The site's too small. An event center needs a big site. It's all about parking. It's all about people going in and out. And it's, it's even worse than saying like a restaurant where people kind of can come in and go out and come in. Event centers, they have a big rush in, they have a big rush out. It's a, it's a, it's a big demand load on circulation. And like Bart, I, I don't have enough information to believe that this is going to work at all. So right now, I'd have to say, this doesn't work. This doesn't add up. And, and that's too bad, because it, it has the possibility, I think, of being a good project. And I, and I would say to the neighbors that if maybe those problems could be worked out, where you didn't have to worry about people in your, in your streets and in your parking spaces, you might feel more akin to this. I, I don't know. But if I was a resident in that area, I'd start to at least think that one of the biggest concerns I'd had would be met. And I, and I don't see how it's being met. I, I just don't. I don't see, I don't, the parking doesn't add up. You know, Wayne said a hundred cars. You could easily have a hundred cars for this. And there's no way there's a hundred cars going to fit in any of the stuff that's been presented to us. And so, you know, what I see here is, is a really kind of an interesting idea and a use that I think could be appropriate for in and around this area. But I see the site fragmented, and I see a lot of concerns that are all site-related. I, I think the noise could probably be an issue, but I wouldn't be as worried about the noise as I'd be worried about the traffic. And I would really be worried about the, the parking situation of people parking way over on one side and on another side. And then I heard, well, we've got a parking agreement with such and such, and so on and so forth. It, it's kind of like hearsay. It, it doesn't add up. And I can't, I can't, I can't approve something that doesn't add up. So what I would say is, if there's a way to put this project together with more site, more diagrams, more parking that's laid out, more convincing evidence to us that this isn't going to be a problem on the neighborhood, and it's not going to be dangerous, you know, then I would say, continue the, the process. But it's, from what I can see, it's difficult. And you really need to convince us of those concerns. And that's how I, that's how I see this project at this point.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I'll just make a few remarks before I try to capture what sounds like the will of the commission is. You know, this, this is a very difficult neighborhood to find a compatible use for. I think those of us who were on the commission when the senior center was approved are all too familiar with some of the challenges for that, for that neighborhood. And from that perspective, the, the previous use for this project was much easier to meet the compatibility finding for. However, like a number of the other commissioners, I'm, I'm not willing to say that it's impossible for this use to, to meet the findings, but that more information and perhaps modification of the application could, could address the concerns that I have. The applicant has spent a lot of time and a lot of effort to make sure that he has an architecturally appealing structure that would add a great deal to the, to the neighborhood. And so, you know, I think we owe it to him to, you know, keep an open mind and, and look at some additional information before rendering a judgment. I'm, I'm, like the others, I won't go through the whole list, but I'm, the two things I'm very concerned about, of course, are the, the parking and the, and the noise. A noise study would be important to me. I think we need to look at that carefully, and then also at some issues, additional measures as far as addressing noise escaping. You know, Eric, I know, you know, you run a nice operation, and I'm sure you'd be very careful, but I think we need to maybe have a little bit more of that nailed down, you know, the issue of whether there's self-closing doors, that sort of thing, to make sure that, that we wouldn't have any noise escaping. I, I, you know, Amber, I applaud you. I think you really made a, a big effort to find a creative solution for the applicant by having this, you know, the valet parking over at the, at the city lot. And the city even benefits because the, the lot, you know, becomes improved. I do worry about that being a workable solution. And, and like the others, I would want to see more information about, you know, potential crosswalk, you know, how the traffic would, would be handled at that signal in order to accommodate those valets, you know, running back and, and forth. And even though we can't consider it in making the parking counts, I think we would all be much more comfortable if the applicant were able to complete those negotiations with some of his neighbors so that we knew that some of the unanswered questions about overflow parking were able to be answered. So the things I just mentioned, I think I, I heard a number of the commissioners saying, that more information about the traffic light, the crosswalk, the valet threshold limit, at what point would they be required to have a valet, more information about how, how the valet service would be handled to work within that small lot, a noise study. You know, Bart talked about more information about the, the traffic, more analysis about the traffic. And Don also brought up hours of, of operation. It seems to me that it, if, if a motion were made to continue this to a date certain or a date uncertain, whatever staff's recommendation is, I think we would want to see those things addressed before it came back before us.
Madam Chair, I wanted to be sure that the people on, on the other side were also noticed. And if they haven't been noticed, they need to be noticed.
I had a couple of things. That was one of them, Wayne. We would try and notice, even if it's beyond the three hundred feet, the San Gabriel, the other side. The other thing I, I think Bart brought up was to check with the OCFA about the fire lane requirements. I think that's all I had to say.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Ruhl had a good point about the casino's permits. I think that might be, might be that the applicant needs to explore.
Looking into that as an option in terms of, so the neighbor, so we can see how it works in the neighborhood and like that.
Yeah, we can divine what is a-
Yeah, we can divine what is a special activity under their use versus their regular operating.
Could you guys also say, I think someone said something about looking at the hours of operation, maybe limiting it to less than 12:00 p.m. and 1:00 p.m. on holidays?
I think that's probably related to the, you know, whether there's normal operation and then special events, and how many of those would be possible where the hours could be extended.
And when we look into traffic and we analyze that, we're taking into account the other uses all around it, correct?
Yeah, they look, what happens, the traffic looks at the built-out conditions, not even just existing, but the built-out conditions of the area.
Yeah, I had specifically evaluating the circulation, including intersection design and impacts with the Pedro's circulation.
And the commercial uses just after this also, the Spanish Village and the liquor store, 7-Eleven, I'm trying to think what else is right around there, but it's.
San.
San Otyre, but also the neighborhood, you know, them trying to get in and out, you know, trying, when there's cars trying to park.
At one time, East San Gabriel was one way, it is now two ways, and that makes a difference with the amount of the traffic, circulation there, makes a big difference.
And before I make a motion to continue it, I'd like to at least give the owner the opportunity to get our comments on the architectural permit and the site plan permit, because on the architectural permit, I could make the finding to approve the architecture, there might be some conditions, but nothing that would have to change at this point, so you wouldn't have to go back necessarily, other, maybe the sound doors and whatnot. But in general, I think the architecture would be good, and on the site plan, I think that dovetails into the condition use permit as far as affecting the neighborhood, and those same standards would apply.
I would agree with Commissioner Crandall on that, that best statement, that the architectural permit is, is very well thought-out project from that standpoint.
And I agree with that as well.
The architectural permit, permit fine, the site permit, I have some real problems with.
Yeah. Michael?
I agree with that.
Okay, I think we're all on the, on the same page with regards to those issues, and I think it's a good idea to give the applicant some feedback on that, so he knows what, what's down the line.
I just want to clarify that the concerns with the site plan permit are due to the use in the building. I just want to clarify that.
Well, my concern would be finding 12, the proposed development will not be detrimental to public health safety law, so that's the one item.
Okay.
I would assume you're going to recommend it not be a date certain, but be a date uncertain.
Just to table the item.
Just to table the item, and the applicant is agreeable to that as well.
Okay.
Then, if there's no more discussion, I will move that we table this item.
No second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes seven zero, and I hope you're able to find some solutions to those issues, and we look forward to seeing this come back before us at a future date. And we'll be taking a brief recess, let's do 10 minutes, and come back at quarter to 10.
Thank you, thank you.
Sharon, before you start, Chair Darden, I want to recuse myself from this item because of possible appearance of conflict of interest.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. The city has received requests to remove city trees for view purposes. We have received these over the years, and have typically told the applicant that we are not allowed to do that, our current policy does not address view purposes, so there are, there are.
Can you speak up? I don't usually have trouble hearing you, but for some reason tonight I am.
I don't, I, how about that?
That's better.
Sorry about that. Our current policy does not allow us to remove trees for view purposes. There are a number of reasons, and the attachment is in your packet, that we can remove trees, and they're usually things that the tree is diseased, or structurally unsound, or conflicting with utilities. But to remove trees for view purposes is not addressed in our existing policy. So the city council has asked that we take this question to a number of committees and commissions. The Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commission heard this last few weeks ago, you are the second group to hear it, and then it will also go to the Golf Committee. These three entities were selected because the city council narrowed the scope that it wanted to look at. Originally, the city council thought, well, should we look at all trees in all areas? And the city council said, no, what we'd like to look at is, should we change the policy with respect to trees that were on public lands? And those public lands would be parks, parks also define beaches, golf courses, and then also public trees that would be on residential streets, not larger streets where there might be public views, and then also utility sites such as reservoir sites. So because that was the scope of it, it became, since it's about the golf course, the Golf Committee would need to opine on that, the Beaches, Parks, and Recreation would opine on beaches, parks, and your area of focus would be residential streets, and then also potentially the reservoir sites or utility sites. So the way we would normally process these things is how staff is suggesting, since you would normally see those types of things, that might be the, the way that we would go about this, that this group would see those and make recommendation to city council, should we want to go in that direction. The, what we're asking for you tonight is really kind of two questions and one with the subset. The first question is really, should we change the policy? Is this something that we want to enter into and potentially make amendments to the existing policy? And then the second question, sort of a follow-up, is if we do wish to amend the policy, what kind of criteria might we develop to be able to do this? I think this could be a very sweeping issue, and it could be very challenging to differentiate what trees should or should not be removed. So if we want to go down the road of changing the policy, staff suggests that we might want to look at things of, is there a specific distance that a tree might be within a property, should Should anyone be allowed to make application for removal of a tree? Or should it be a group of people? How might we go about processing this? And so, we ask that if you want to amend the policy, then we would need to develop some criteria. And you could either develop that criteria with this group, or perhaps set a subcommittee that might work with the Beaches, Parks and Recreation Commission members. They've already identified two people to work as a subcommittee. And then potentially also some members of the golf committee to work through those details of criteria. In looking at this, staff did some research. City council asked us to look at best practices. And we did try and hunt for a city that would be similar. We often like to steal from other cities who have been successful and use their policies.
We like to say inspired by.
Inspired by, and write them very similarly to. We were not able to find something very similar. What we did find kind of closest is City of Laguna Beach. They do deal with views, but they deal with views in a very global sense. So they deal with public and private views. They deal with views with regard to built structures as well as landscape. You may have read in the paper that they have hired a couple of planners, and there's a whole process to this, and at present that, that article talked about spending about $350,000 in the implementation of how they deal with them. So that question's a little bit different than what we're asking here. Ours is a much smaller scope. City of Palos Verdes has a view preservation approach, but it is also a more global sense. And so we weren't able to find any that just dealt with public trees and private views. So we may be crafting our own criteria here. I will be brief, and I answer questions if you'd like, but I also know that I think there are some folks in the audience here who would like to speak. So I'll conclude quickly unless there is something that I've missed.
Yeah, I have a question. The, am I correct in that we, although we don't currently protect private views from trees, that we have our public view corridors, and those, do we have any special protection for those public view corridors regarding trees?
You do. Those are identified both in the general plan, and actually I should, I should stop and suggest that John Chiampa is here, and maybe better to answer those planning questions. And I also have Dennis Roger Reed, our Parks and Beaches Maintenance Manager, who can also answer some specific questions on our trees. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring John up and let him go through that, because he will probably be more accurate than I.
Thank you, Sharon. Kathy, did you have a question for her before?
Okay.
So we do, we do have a couple of policies in our new general plan that speak specifically about trees. And in our urban design element, there are, policy 6.06, public view corridors, states that we require that street trees planted along designated public view corridors have narrow form and open structure to allow for visual access. Street trees should be carefully placed and properly pruned, and follow best management practices. Also identifies for tree preservation, that we make every effort to preserve mature trees before considering tree removal. Let's see, I think there may be one more. That's primarily it. Let's see, I think we have... Yeah, that's, that's primarily it, related to the, specifically related to tree policies for views, corridors.
Kathy, you had a question?
Okay, that's just on the use of corridors. Those aren't on trees in general for the general plan. I don't think you understand my question. What you just read was just specifically on view corridor trees. Our general plan doesn't say we are gonna try to preserve every mature tree.
There are other policies related to the tree preservation in the urban design element. 6.08, tree preservation, says we make every effort to preserve mature trees before considering tree removal.
Okay. Now during that, during the process of the general plan, our city council also brought this up, requesting for us to take on the public trees. Is that correct? There were several discussions on it while we were going through the general plan?
Yes.
So this isn't something that, it just came up after the general plan was approved?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so the issue was...
A lot of the implementation measures of the general plan is development of a tree ordinance, which is, which is different than what we're doing here. We're just looking at amending an existing policy and procedure on how we treat our street trees. And even that is, from my understanding, Sharon, is a very narrow view, because we're not talking about necessarily arterial parkways.
Or the beach.
Or the beach, right?
The beach is defined as a park. But I do believe that this question was independent of the master plan discussion. And the city council asked, at least us, BPNR, to bring this as a separate topic. It does, you know, if staff got into it, it does have implications to the master plan. But I'm not su, I mean, sorry, the general plan. I'm thinking Beaches, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, yes. It does have implications to that, that staff is looking at as we're analyzing this. But I do not believe that council brought it up as an implementation measure in their thinking of it. I think they looked at the subject and said, staff, go out and give us an answer for this particular subject, which may be a subset of the larger question.
And when the subject, and correct me if my memory is wrong, but when the subject came up a year ago, and I think this might address your question, Kathy, we had quite a lengthy discussion about it. And we made a recommendation, actually in writing, to the city council recommending that the issue not be addressed in isolation, and that it be part of a much larger strategy that would be reflected in overall tree ordinance. So in answer to your question, that was, it did come up, and that was our recommendation at that time.
Okay, that's good to have that background. Can I clarify one thing in the staff report? John might have to do this. When you talked about that you couldn't find other cities that had a process strictly for city public trees, you've mentioned here that the City of Palos Verdes, their view preservation process was 29 pages, but it included a fee of $51,000. That actually is for private trees. It's not for public. They do have a public tree permit, and it's $688. And it's one page. And I didn't know if anyone else found that. And it is for, it's a city tree review permit application for view restoration, dealing just with city trees. And the language is pretty good, but I just wanted to point that out, that there is processes for the city to do that, and it's not $5,000. That that's in part of their, it's like step number three in their private tree. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out.
Would you have a question?
Yeah, John.
Sharon or John?
You're talking about public view corridors, is that correct?
In, in the policies that I was stating?
Right.
There's a public view corridor policy. It's, I think, Jim, Jim, it's actually 6.06, so it's a few, few pages down.
This is natural resources here. That's natural resources.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of policies that do address tree-related issues.
It is, it's in urban design.
Okay, so if there are, if there's a, I don't want to get too specific here, but scenic public view corridors versus public view corridors?
Revisiting our earlier...
Revisiting that technicality. Hours on the definition. I want to be, I'd like to do some clarification with regard to what our policy is now with regard to public view corridors. Public view corridors.
And landscaping.
And landscaping. Do we have anything at this point?
In terms of existing policies?
Yes.
Do you want to jump in?
For some of that, I, there's lots of things. We have a, policies that identify public view corridors that are protected, and we do consider landscaping as part of that when we do landscaping and design. We try and select trees that enhance views as public.
What do we have a public view corridor that is, has had some plantings on it, that has gone from this far of an ocean view to this far of an ocean view?
Well, we look at it usually with the site design of a particular project. I can't recall us ever cutting trees in order to enhance the public view corridor. I just haven't ever ran into it, though. But if you were to do a development in a public view corridor, we would look at, you know, the types of plantings of trees and try and preserve it. I know that when we were looking at some recent plantings on the Pico corridor, we were looking at some of those street trees, but it's not directly the same thing as this policy that we're talking about.
All right, thank you.
Sharon, maybe you could help us understand, or maybe I might be the only one who needs this kind of clarification. But I'm not clear on what types of streets would be included in this. So when we say residential streets, are we saying the, the trees that go down the median on Esplanade or on Olavista? If one of those palm trees on the Olavista median was blocking somebody's view, that that might be included in, in this type of policy?
Council did not give us that level of specificity. They did use the term residential streets, so I do think that if we go into this, that is one of the things that we will need to define, because, you know, obviously there are different classifications of streets beyond just residential and non-residential that we'd have to get into.
And did they exclude, it sounds like they excluded, say, El Camino Real. So the palm trees on El Camino Real, because that's an arterial, not a residential.
Yes, I believe their intent was the larger, non-neighborhood residential streets, but we'd certainly have to get into the detail of the exact definition of that for sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jim?
And would any rules that we passed in this way that affect residential streets also affect, would they supersede HOA rules regarding tree planting?
No, what we're looking at are the streets that are in the public right-of-way. So we do have some public trees that are in an HOA, an HOA area. But those are the first line of planting in the street, so we would really just be addressing those city, those trees that are city trees, not those trees that are maintained by HOA.
And do we know approximately how much of the residential streets that covers? Is that, you know, 50%? And what do the HOAs control in terms of those streets? That 50% of the streets in the city?
It's most of the city, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I thought it was like...
That's my question.
I'm gonna ask Dennis Reed, who may have a better estimate, since he has to maintain them all.
Good evening, council. I'm Dennis Reed, the Beaches Parks Maintenance Manager. Could you ask that question again?
Yeah, my question was, do you have an idea of the percentage of residential streets that are, where the landscaping is controlled and maintained by the HOAs versus the city?
I think the vast majority are gonna be public streets.
Maintained by the city?
When we're speaking about landscaping, we're talking about specifically trees now. So again, I think the example that Sharon used is probably a good one. Let's say Del Cerro is an example. We have trees in the medians, and we have parkway trees. But the vast majority of trees in the area on Del Cerro are private trees maintained by the HOA. We maintain the first line of planting in the parkway, and we maintain the median trees. So if you look at that area, let's say that there's 16,000 trees maybe in Rancho, the vast majority would stay with, under the purview of the HOA. And again, I would say, my guess is Del Cerro would be considered a major street and would not be part of the program. That's where we'll need more definition. Again, there's a million questions that will have to be straightened out. Maybe a million's too many, but quite a few questions that will have to be straightened out designate what's a view as an example. Or, you know, we're gonna do views that are from a bathroom window, you know. There's a lot of criteria in other agencies that we would be able to piggyback on. But again, we, the question tonight is, do we want to change the policy? If the answer is no, then we don't have the second question. The second question, if we are gonna change the policy, how do we address these types of, a myriad of questions that we'll have to answer? But that's a guess by my part, but I think, again, many of our, our HOAs, for example, Talega, all the trees in Talega are maintained by Talega with the exception of the trees that are within the public parks, which is rather unusual. We have a number of other HOAs like that where they're really taking on responsibility that might normally be considered city responsibilities, but because of either maintenance or development agreements, as an example in Talega, they wanted to maintain their street trees. They wanted to maintain the parkway trees, the median trees within Talega. So we have some exemptions like that, where we have trees that might look to be public trees, but because of either a maintenance or a development agreement, they are being maintained by the HOA.
So if I understand this correctly, you're saying that what this nets out to is that most of the trees that we would be talking about in, quote, the public space on the public, we wouldn't, whatever ordinance we may or may not do, or whatever thing we may change, would not affect most of the trees, because they are controlled by, maintained by HOA and not the city?
I think most is a difficult term.
Majority.
We maintain right now in San Clemente, without doing an inventory, having a specific, I'd say that we're judging that we maintain about 16,000 trees roughly. That's not including the golf course. I would say there are vastly more private trees than that. I think the majority of areas that would be impacted, the residential streets west of the I-5, that's probably where they're gonna see more of view blockages than we see in some of the other terrorist communities. I think that our streets that are west of the five will feature more of issues with view blockage.
Thank you.
So you maintain, if I may, Madam Chair, you maintain then all the city parks, including up in Talega?
That's, that's correct. There is a private park in Talega, but we have three parks in Talega that we maintain.
Okay, and are you also responsible for all the, the other city facility type lands, like the reservoirs and the city, the water treatment plant? Do you maintain the, everything around City Hall? Do you do all the public buildings in the city?
Roughly speaking, yes. The, our, our water facilities are funded through the utilities, but my division administers the contract for those. As you mentioned, other non-parkage, City Hall, the Beach Club, Community Center, those are maintained by the city as well.
And all the utility, other utility functions on the properties of the city you maintain?
That's correct. Not all of our utility properties have landscape, but those that do are under a contract that we administer. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy?
I wanted to clarify what the city council, it's in the staff report, what the city council wanted us to look at. Said city council directed staff to research best practices utilized by other cities, but limited the discussion to trees in parks, golf courses, reservoir sites, and other public special activity areas. The council was not interested in a policy that would apply to trees located on major city streets, or trees located on private or homeowners association. So I took that to read that any tree on any of our residential streets that is a public tree that still exists, and any tree in any of our parks that is a public, public tree, and not the beach, oh, I'm sorry, the reservoir site, but not, I took it as not the beach. I thought that they were, I thought I read that somewhere, that the beach was not included on this. They were not interested in that. There's nothing in writing in that?
Will be, the reason being is that beaches are defined in the general plan as a park. So when they say park, it also includes beaches.
Okay, so I know it is confusing, because in your policies, though, the current procedure that you have, when you talk about a park tree, you're saying that's all trees that are planted upon city-owned land, including beaches, parks, and golf courses.
Correct.
So when I talk about a park, I don't mean a park tree. I'm talking about like Verde Park, or San Gregorio Park.
Right.
So...
It's just the policy defines park to be broader than that. It also includes the beaches and the golf course.
But I didn't take that to, that the city council was interested in that. That's what I think I want to clarify.
Yes, they were interested in the golf course, and parks, and beaches, and reservoir sites, and residential streets.
The paragraph down at the bottom of it, because I found the paragraph's confusing because they, I marked the same thing, Kathy. The one up, up top seemed a little different than the one down below. But I think what, Sharon, what you're, what you're saying is basically this paragraph down at the bottom is listing what, what they've asked us to focus on.
Right, because the policy just says park, and it's misleading, so I tried to explain in more detail of what that all includes.
And are you saying, and this, and I did not get this impression from the, from the staff report, are you saying that it was council's intention that the three different groups only focus on their areas, so that we, so that we would not focus on, on parks, and we would not... not focus on the golf course, that we would only be focusing on streets?
No.
Okay, because that's not what I got from this, but I thought that's what I heard.
And I may have misspoken. The intent would be, if we did do a policy, how might that work? And we might divide it up in, if you were to amend a landscape, the way the park plans usually work now, if you're building a park plan, it goes through beaches, parks, and recreation as the advisory body to city council. If you're doing a reservoir site or residential street, it goes through Planning Commission and then you approve that. If you're doing something on the golf course, it goes to golf committee and then on to city council. So that was why staff suggested that these three bodies ought to meet on that. But council did not define that you shall only make comment.
Okay, so we're evaluating the need for the overall policy.
Correct.
But then if we felt there was a need and then we start looking at criteria, our focus on the next steps for the criteria would be more on the residential streets or the areas that fell more into the purview of the planning commission.
I think that's a very accurate way to say it.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne, I didn't see your light. Go ahead.
Hi. Can you, was it direction from city council that homeowner associations would have the power to say that a tree on a, a public tree on a city park a mile away, would they have the opportunity as a homeowner association to make application to remove that tree?
I don't think city council has reached that level of detail yet.
Okay.
I think they are asking, would we like to look at any of these?
Okay. Because I think it's been probably an unwritten policy of the city to really not become involved in homeowner association issues outside of their homeowner association perimeter. So I just wanted to ask that question.
And I think that is some of the criteria that we would need to define. Is there a distance, if a tree is a mile away from your home or a homeowner's association, is that something that we should entertain or is there some distance in between there?
Well, the basic philosophy I have is, should we, as a city, really allow a homeowner association, the group itself, have that ability, I don't care if it's 50 feet away or a mile away, should we have, let the homeowner association have that ability to make application to remove a tree?
They did not define whether it had to be an individual or it could be a collective group of people, and so I think that's some of the criteria that we'd need to work through.
Right, and I'll speak about that later on after we have the public testimony.
Kathy?
Dennis, could you come back up and, I forgot to ask you a couple of questions when you were up here. Let's just talk about Verde Park a little bit. The bluff area against some of the first homes that are there by the park, why was that planted? Do you know the intent of why the trees were planted right up against the property line? I think it's on like a.
Bluff area, we have a hillside that overlooks Del Huevo, which is the cul-de-sac, the last cul-de-sac before the school. And you also have the hillside below in Palme. So we have two large hillsides that have trees.
Why would we plant in a park at the top of the bluff, next to the property owners? Well, I mean, what would be our intent or our reason? That's what I'm wondering.
Are you talking about just the proximity to homes?
Yes. We heard testimony, I think, I don't know, several months ago, from homeowners, they sent us letters that they had trees right up against their property, eucalyptus, that hung over their property. And now we have some letters today from owners that have eucalyptus up against their property and they mentioned it being on a bluff. And I'm just wondering why those are planted that way? What was the intent?
We have a picture of that, I believe.
Oh.
It's difficult for me to answer that because the park was developed in 1976. I was not involved in the design. Let me just say that that's not unusual for other city parks in San Clemente, and I would say it's not unusual for parks in general. We're building parks in residential areas and spaces at a premium.
Yeah, leave that up for a second.
Is that it? I don't see homes.
Well, just a second, I'll clarify this. Beyond these trees is the path that leads, that the students walk up, but then to the right of this is another sidewalk within Verde Park itself, and there are trees, eucalyptus trees on the other side of that. And then there's a bluff going down and there are the houses. Who owns those trees?
Well, in this picture, to the left.
No, to, no, to the right.
Are those the school district trees?
It's a little difficult. The boundary of the school district property dissects the tennis court. Approximately one quarter of the tennis court is on campus one unified school district property. If the photograph went down the hillside to Del Huevo and you were able to sight the very last home, their fence line that is perpendicular to the school, and you take that line all the way up to Palme, that's the school district property. So the fence that borders the walkway down to the lower campus is not their boundary. The boundary is a good 60, maybe 80 feet in from that fence.
Okay, so there would be some trees that would then be owned by the school district and some trees that would be owned by the city of San Clemente.
That is correct. There's approximately about 18 trees, I think, are the larger ones that are on campus.
Because there's a bluff that goes down from there. Right.
I'm still having trouble. Aren't there trees at the top of this bluff? Not this one, but a bluff going up to homes in Broadmoor?
On Palme, there are some trees that are very near the homes. Del Huevo, there are probably two or three that are very close to approximately to the homes. There's also some on the Salida side, but that's not a very steep hillside. That's a very low hillside.
Say that name again. Can you spell that street?
Salida, S-A-L-I-D-A. That's a very narrow hillside. Then Palme is the largest, yes, there's trees there. Palme is the largest slope, and then the other slope goes down to Del Huevo.
How many trees are on the slope of Salida? Do you know?
Oh, probably a very small number. I think there's a grouping of about a half dozen trees toward the entrance of the park near Salida, and maybe another half. It doesn't spread throughout the entire park.
I think that it would probably be better if, at some future date, we'd have a site plan of Verde Park to show exactly what we're talking about here because it's difficult to understand that.
What I'd like to suggest to the commissioners is, as Sharon has said, this is a very broad issue with a lot of different moving parts. Rather than getting down into the granular level at this point, perhaps we should hear from the community and then, as we begin our discussion, perhaps talk about what our strategy is for focusing our discussion and going from there.
All right, I was trying to ask staff questions.
And to be clear, Kathy, we were all asking staff questions. I just noticed that we were all getting a little bit granular, and we can go back to staff for questions if that's all right. Okay, let's open the public hearing. And if you would like to speak and have not already filled out a card, please do so. Please also make sure to limit your remarks to three minutes. We will be enforcing the three-minute rule. And I ask you all to be courteous to everyone who speaks, whether you agree with their position or not. The first person to come to the podium will be Curly Snyder, and after Curly will be Bill Stewart, and then Chris Stewart. And I ask that those of you who are following Mr. Snyder, please line up in the aisle behind him in the interest of efficiency. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Curly Snyder, 49-year resident of San Clemente. In the 80s, I circulated a petition for private view trees, tree ordinance. It failed 28, 3,800 votes to 2,800. Anyway, there's good arguments on here on why we should preserve views because they bring in money. Every time somebody sells a house, like my neighborhood right now, I paid $30,000 for it, it's worth over a million. When I sell it, the city will get $10,000 a year gift. So if people are selling their homes down the road, this is an income for the city. If the city don't need the money, then don't cut the trees. Plant two smaller trees instead of one big one that's going to take a view. Those you call money trees because they're going to bring money. They're not blocking views. And back in 86, you all got this, hopefully in your packets, okay, I saved this from the previous meeting in the 80s whereby they planted, they seeded Bonito Park. They put a whole bunch of trees down there. Actually, they were those kind of trees. That's what they look like today, 30 years later. And some of them, the limbs now are blowing off and getting tangled up in the power lines which run along the top there. There's probably 21 stubs in there where they overseeded. They came back and cut them out. Can you imagine 21 more of those trees down in Verde Park, or not Verde Park, but in Bonito Canyon where the kids are playing soccer? That's not a very good situation, especially with those electricals. Also on your packet, you'll find city ordinances from five different communities that have the same problem we do. And accidentally, the city of Laguna Beach called me when this was going around. That's where they got all this from. So I suggest that maybe some of these cities have already done this for you. There's applications on the back that maybe will guide the city. Because I really don't know why the city would not want more income by trimming those trees or putting in shorter ones so that people can enhance their views and have a happy life. I don't have that many sunsets left. I'm doing a court battle right now for one of my neighbors. I have CCNRs. I got to take that, that's a private matter. Thank you. We need something to do with these views so we can get some more money in the city, take care of all these pensions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Next will be Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry, Bill Stewart, then Chris Stewart, and then George Brody, please.
I also have pictures of when we had our view and when we don't have our view.
I'm sorry. Okay, you're Chris.
I'm Chris Stewart, and I live at 141 Avenida Cota in the south end of San Clemente above a water reservoir. I am going to, I have been asked to read a letter from a neighbor who was not able to come. So, dear city planners, my wife and I are in full support of the proposed policy in which the city conducts itself as a good neighbor with regard to the towering screen of eucalyptus trees around its water tank near the Avenida Castanza cul-de-sac. Our house is located on the far end of Avenida Cota. During the recent fire in Camp Pendleton, city officials monitored the progress of the firefighting from our backyard for the very reason that it provides a pretty good view into Camp Pendleton. I am sending this email directly to, well, skip that. If I had a tree on my property that blocked my neighbor's view and my neighbor offered to replace or trim that tree, we would consider it to be our duty as a good neighbor to allow for the tree's replacement. During the hearings that I have attended, there have only been two areas of tree removal and replacement of concern. Those relate to the water tank and Verde Park. The problems are both caused by eucalyptus. In a significant sense, as became clear by the testimony of those whose views have been blocked or screened at Broadmoor or near the Castanza water tank, this is not a citywide issue. It is an issue that should have been addressed by city leadership on its own some time ago with regard to these two specific problem areas relating to the city-owned properties. With regard to the water tank, Avenida Castanza, this is an easy, good neighbor issue. The same reasons apply to Verde Park. Why? Here are some of the reasons. San Clemente was designed and developed so that as many residents as possible would have a good view of the ocean from their homes, just as a theater, everyone is supposed to be able to view. The city trees at the water tank are like the person in front of you at the theater deciding to stand up the whole time. This situation is even worse because the views get progressively more blocked as trees get bigger and taller. The homes around the water tank used to have an excellent view of the ocean and is now screened. Removal will restore views. The loss of an ocean view is very depressing, both emotionally to the owner and to the value of the real estate. The loss of the view is caused by San Clemente. By its failure to be a good neighbor makes it even worse. The eucalyptus trees tower over the water tank by 70 to 80 feet. The city would not and should not allow someone to build a building that would grow bigger and taller over time without further city review and approval. Why should the city allow unrestricted size of its own trees that are impacting others? Eucalyptus trees are not to be on the city's tree pallets based upon the discussion with the city landscape consultant. These trees were based on several.
Miss Stewart, I'm sorry, I've got to ask everybody to stick to the three-minute limit.
Well, almost done. But basically, in the last 11 years that we've lived at our house, we had a view and now we don't, and we've paid several times to have the trees.
Ma'am, I understand that we have to be fair to everybody.
I'll make it real brief.
Okay.
When we bought the house, there was a panorama ocean view of Dana Point with the sailboats coming out of the harbor, okay? That's what I paid the big money for. And what's funny is the city actually put those trees there to block the view of the water tank on the far end long before I showed up, and then the trees just kept marching and growing around this thing. So they're trees out of control. I think if you Google trees, the worst, the second worst tree in California is the eucalyptus. 80% of your problems in this room are eucalyptus. If you really look at, nobody wants to kill a tree. Nobody wants to destroy beautiful trees. That's not the point. The point is, what we, we're not trying to move in and complain that there's an airplane flying over our house and then try to get rid of the airport. This is something we paid for, for a beautiful view. If you came to my house, and a lot of these people have because I invited them all, and saw the situation, mine's totally different than ladies under oak trees feeding pigeons. This is a situation where it is a water tank, it serves no purpose, it should just be cut down, cleaned up, and put some simple bushes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next will be George Brody, and after Mr. Brody, Jerry Colomer and Gary Hedrick.
And, Madam Commissioner, members of the planning commission, my name is George Brody, and I have been living on Caia Fiesta for the past 37 years. I will be talking about the, specifically about Verde Park. Verde Park is a microcosmos of problems. We have some 80 to 100-foot tall eucalyptus trees in the Verde Park. The city planted them and the city allowed them to grow that high. In addition to the view loss problem, which you will be, you have heard and you will be hearing more about, I would like to focus on the safety problem. Eucalyptus trees are dangerous because they tend to be fragile due to the oils which they contain, for the same reason, they are very flammable. Eucalyptus trees are no longer on San Clemente's and other communities approved list for new plantings for that reasons. Large branches have been broken off and fallen down on the walk paths. It will be interesting to see, as some of one of you suggested, the entire Verde Park view because there are eucalyptus trees growing on both sides. You only saw the picture of the tennis court a minute ago, but there are large trees growing over the walks. So large branches have been, especially when we have strong winds, then you can see these branches falling down. Children and adults could have been injured or killed. Fortunately, so far, none of that has really happened, but if it does, I'm concerned that the city of San Clemente may be facing million-dollar lawsuits. As I reported in our previous meeting a few weeks ago, I talked about a dozen of my neighbors on Caia Fiesta in Caia Neblina. All of them, even the ones who do not have the view loss problem, because not everybody has that problem, they all were concerned and agreed that the safety is a problem that in, and they all feel that the city should mitigate this dangerous problem. We feel that is the city's responsibility to do so. Therefore, whether the tree policy is changed or not, this will be your decision in the future, we respectfully request that the city of San Clemente remove and replace. It's very important to replace trees. We need trees. Trees are good. With smaller trees that will not grow that big, and for safety reasons, they should be other than eucalyptus trees. The number which I suggest, because I went to the park and I counted them, it's approximately 25. So we are not talking about thousands of trees. So this way, the park will be safer.
Mr. Brody, I'm so sorry, your time is expired.
The park will be safer and everybody. The park will be safer and everybody will be happier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next will be Jerry Colomer, then Gary Hedrick, and then Robert Steele, please.
Hi. Excuse me. Jerry Colomer, my wife Carol and I have lived in San Clemente a good long time. We're obviously very pro-trees, and we live down by the bluff, so we're not part of an But this conversation tonight has gotten very complicated in the last few minutes, and I'm really not prepared to participate intelligently. So what I'd like to do is turn my time over to Pat Holloway, who talks about this stuff in details that you all understand. So I'm gonna give up my time right now to let her speak. Is that okay?
No, actually, we're not gonna have any ceding of time to anybody.
Okay, well, sooner or later, she's gonna get up and talk.
I know she is, and we'd love to hear her for her three minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so Gary Hedrick, I believe is next, and then Mr. Steele.
Good evening. I'm Gary Hedrick, here to represent San Clemente Green. It's nice to be in front of you, and I don't often get to do this. So I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate your previous decision to move this issue back when you had mentioned that this topic's come up before, and it's just not really the time or the right process or procedure to try to make decisions like this without our tree ordinance in place. And the tree ordinance really is a key component to addressing all these issues in a fair way, especially when it comes to private interest deciding whether public trees should exist or not. So I would like to remind you that San Clemente Green was actually initiated in 2008 so that we could have a sustainability action plan, and the tree ordinance was a major component of that, which was a guiding factor for our general plan and climate action plan. So all of these factors around trees are very complicated. I think you're wise to pass it on to a future decision and not try to make an amendment tonight. Hopefully, if the simple decision is, do we make the amendment, or do we get into all the nitty and gritty about which trees and all that? I think it's a pretty straightforward decision that we should not be amending the current tree plan until we have a very well-thought-out tree ordinance that's long overdue, and unfortunately, it hasn't happened yet, but I think that's our focus should be on creating that tree ordinance so that everyone can be fairly represented and the public trees are spoken for and well-represented as well as the private views. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, Mr. Steele, and then John Hazelton, please.
I'm Robert Steele. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of San Clemente, and we lived above the thirteenth hole on the golf course. That's where we had these eighty-foot eucalyptus trees and so forth. Really, there's two issues here, I think, that perhaps you wanna talk about in terms of policy. One is those trees have resulted in a taking of our view. When they planted those trees, they grew to such a height that they took our view. And if we were to sue the city in inverse condemnation, we would claim that there was a taking of our view. And that's a strong allegation, I think you ought to consider that in what you're talking about. It's certainly not a good neighbor thing to let your trees get out of hand and take away Bill's view and result in such a negative situation to the neighbors. That's one thing. The other thing is the safety issue that was mentioned, too. In Australia, when they had the big firestorm there, the eucalyptus trees were exploding, and they were exacerbating the firestorms that they had there. In Oakland, they had a fire, and same thing, eucalyptus trees exacerbated the fire that they had there. We were notified by the county fire department that we needed to clean the brush from our area and make it safe and so forth, and we did. But the city has not done that. The city has these eucalyptus trees, which are a fire hazard, and not only the trees themselves, but the debris from the trees, the leaves and everything. You go over there and take a look. It's all piled up from years. You get a good fire going, and that's gonna be a lot of brush that will exacerbate the fire there. So you got the fire problem, and you got a taking problem from us. And you know, what you say, that they replace the public trees for a private view purpose, that view belonged to us. You took it. And then you got, you neglected the trees, you let them grow to eighty feet high, and that's really bad city policy. And so that's something you can do about city policy. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your service, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. After Mr. Hazelton will be Georgette Corson.
Good evening, members of the commission and guests. Scientific studies show that people under stress feel calmer in the presence of trees. There is also less neighborhood crime. On the subject of stress, I'd like to quote a webpage on the University of Illinois Landscape and Human Health Laboratory site. Quote, "Psychologists Andrea Taylor and Francis Kuo have found that children with ADHD, that's Attention Deficit Hyperactive Disorder, they experienced a significant reduction in symptoms after they participated in activities in green settings. Whatever the activity, whether it was playing basketball or reading a book, the degree of relief from ADHD symptoms was tied to the greenness of the setting. Green places as a treatment of symptoms for ADHD should come as welcome news for those concerned with the two million school-aged children in the U.S. who live with this neurological disorder." That's the end of the quote. Imagine polling the staff of San Clemente High School about whether they would prefer students looking up at Verde Park's stand of trees above the campus or a sea of house exteriors were the trees to be cut down. I bet that the view of the trees would soundly trump the view of the houses. Should the city be a good neighbor to a few homeowners or to the high school? What about the people riding up and down Pico who look up at the stand of trees in the park? Would they rather look up at the sea of houses? I doubt it. Ill effects will be caused by catering to a few homeowners to the detriment of the public at large. Now, on the subject of these eucalyptus trees, some of the Broadmoor homeowners have been complaining about eucalyptus trees. Public trees should have a pruning schedule to mitigate risk of falling tree limbs and latent fire danger. I owned a stand of bluegum eucalyptus at my prior residence, and they were pruned every three years, and that was to ensure against branches snapping in Santa Ana winds and to prevent fire danger. Let's avoid a piecemeal approach to conserving our public trees. A comprehensive tree ordinance, as recommended by G-PAC, after three years of public input, will enable many kinds of good public policy. View protection benefiting a few private parties via destruction of trees to the detriment of the public is bad policy. Thank you.
Thank you. After Georgette will be Patricia Holloway. Is this gonna start over?
All right. Well, I grew up in Laguna Beach, which was nothing but eucalyptus trees, and listening to them tonight, I think I'm lucky that I'm here tonight and that I escaped with my life. We bought our home on Esplanade because of the trees. The trees under consideration this evening are the people's trees. They are resources in the public trust that belong to each and every resident of San Clemente. Our representatives are the stewards of these trees. It has been stated that since these are not privately-owned trees being targeted for removal, it's not a property rights issue, as if publicly-owned trees are in some sort of an exempt category without the consequences which could affect someone's rights. I believe the opposite to be true. Removal of publicly-owned trees is actually more egregious than removing a privately-owned tree, not that I would endorse that, because in that instance, there's only one person or family affected by its removal, whereas with a public tree, the entire community is affected. HOAs control approximately two-thirds of San Clemente's landmass. Our city doesn't have the right or the incentive to intervene in their policy. What it has done, however, is to ensure that the city's public land, parks, pier bowl, various open spaces, streetscapes, and golf courses are maintained as secure, beautiful, verdant spaces where residents can be assured of anticipated beauty and a commune with nature. The current policy being proposed would enable HOAs, Broadmoor, for example, to petition the city to have public trees, Verde Park, for example, not on HOA property, cut down to enhance a homeowner's view. In the case of Verde Park, all of San Clemente, as well as generations of residents who have grown up and played there, could be instantly robbed of a valued resource. As with most things, compromise may be the best solution. Instead of losing the taller, beautiful, old-growth trees, why not allow them to be pruned more often? Additionally, the tallest of the trees might have their height reduced, perhaps every three years. If added cost to the city is the issue, perhaps those homeowners, who would most benefit from the more frequent pruning and height reduction, might contribute financially. The reasoning behind not allowing the topping of trees is because it's been demonstrated to be a poor practice for the health of the tree, increasing vulnerability to disease. But in this case, cutting down the trees would be more than an unhealthy practice, it would be lethal. I say let the community retain its valued old-growth trees, but give the homeowners who are most concerned a potential remedy. As you know, we have an outlet mall being built on the bluffs below Broadmoor. Wouldn't it be sad if we cut down trees to enhance an ocean view, only to find that view taken away by the outlet mall? Then we wouldn't have the trees or an ocean view. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgette. Next is Patricia Holloway, and in the interest of full disclosure, Ms. Holloway invited Vice Chair Brown and myself to hear her group's position, so we met with them earlier this
I'm passing out a map of the homeowners' associations in San Clemente that I'd like you to see. Thank you very much for letting me speak on this issue tonight. You've been asked to consider whether or not to amend the city's existing tree policy to add private view protection to the list of reasons in which public trees may be removed in San Clemente. As a citizen, I believe it's the responsibility of our leaders to protect our public access assets, including the trees that grace our city parks and public places. Please have the courage to say no to permitting the removal of public trees for private views, to do otherwise harms the many for the sake of the few. It's contrary to the goals set forth in our recently adopted general plan, sustainability action plan, and climate action plan, all of which call for expanding, not shrinking, the tree canopy in San Clemente. The proposed amendment would permit both individuals and homeowners' associations to request tree removals on the public property. There are over ninety homeowners' associations in San Clemente right now that already control a vast part of our community and control over the trees within their boundaries. Why should the city grant a homeowners' association the right to decide the fate of trees in non-h homeowners' association property, as well as our public lands? To me, this is privatization of public resources and is also an imposition to those citizens who choose not to live in an HOA. For example, if the residents of Broadmoor are permitted to pay for the removal of forty-year-old trees in Verde Park to create views, then the trees in every city park, residential street, or golf courses, and public places like Casa or Monica are seriously at risk, even if a public process is followed. And City Hall, this means City Hall is inviting lawsuits from residents who will blame the city for permitting a building or a tree to block their personal view. Instead, the planning commission should be following its own strategic implementation plan that gave urgent priority to developing a comprehensive tree ordinance, updating our city's tree inventory and master landscape plan, identifying landmark trees, and creating a blueprint for tree planting and replacement in the community. A tree ordinance could also permit more frequent tree trimming in our city parks and possibly phase out undesirable tree species like eucalyptus, for example. Ole Hansen planted park and street trees throughout San Clemente, and we must pledge to maintain and plant new trees for future generations of San Clementeans. Let's create an environment that fosters an appreciation for the benefits that trees provide. One final point, if the commission does decide to appoint a subcommittee, we'd like the San Clemente Tree Foundation to participate on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Next is Paul Neve. Okay, thank you for letting me know. Then Bob Joseph, Alan Corson.
But he told me to tell that he supports replanting, intentional replanting.
Okay, thank you. So Bob Joseph, Alan Corson, and then Carol Wonderly.
Bob Joseph, I spoke at last week's parks meeting, and I'll repeat some of the comments that I made at that group. I believe that if this existing policies on tree maintenance be changed to include the language that would allow tree removal for view, private views, I think it provides a very bad precedent. And that precedent would be an avalanche of other people coming in, because once you do one tree, it's going to be one tree after the other, and that's going to be a terrible road to go down, and there will be no way to return from it. I would encourage that if the language that protects trees be modified, then strengthen the language that applies to management and maintenance. That should take care of, I would believe that would take care of, most of the complaints that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Alan, and then Carol Wonderly, and then Edward Byer, please.
Good evening. The city council in June of 2010 approved the Sustainability Action Plan, which included creating an urban forest and tree preservation program. G-PAC and the PC also included a desire to preserve public view corridors and discussed, but decided not to include the preservation of private views. To open up trees owned or controlled by the city on major streets, parks, golf courses, reservoir sites, or specialty properties such as the Casa or the Pier Bowl would be contrary to the vision and strategic plan of 2009. Knocking down a mature tree and replacing it with a less intrusive fifteen-gallon would not be tree-nutritile and would degrade, not enhance, the city's urban forest and tree canopy. Some heritage old-growth trees were planted during the formation of our city under the direction of Ole Hansen. Scroll down El Camino Real and look at the trees that were planted five to ten years ago, and imagine how long it's gonna take for them to reach mature size. Think about how old you'll be in another forty years, and think about how long it's gonna take for those trees to grow. Staff correctly suggests it should not be in the city's purview to regulate trees on private property, as a very complex, expensive, and time-consuming process would quickly emerge. The process will be no different when public trees are regulated. This would be a bad neighbor policy, and pit one neighbor against another, as evidenced here tonight by folks that I live with in Broadmoor. The fact that a person is willing to pay money to have a public tree removed and replaced to enhance their personal view should not be the overriding consideration. They belong to and hold a value to the public at large. Do not go down the slippery slope. As a co-chairman of the recent G-PAC, I spent over three years helping to create the recently adopted Centennial General Plan. This document should govern the adoption of ordinances referring to trees. There is no reference to the removal of publicly-owned trees by all-- There is no reference to the removal of publicly-owned trees by all of the San Clemente residents to protect the private views of a few. There is an implementation measure to develop a tree ordinance. This would be putting the cart before the horse. If a tree removal policy is adopted, it will place the Planning Commission in a position to decide the life or death of many trees in San Clemente, some of which have been living here, enhancing our lives long before any of us arrived. Regardless of whatever euphemistic terms are used to describe this proposed policy, it is a tree-removal ordinance to benefit a few, not the tree ordinance required by the general plan. The City Council has asked you to weigh in on this proposal, but please do not go down that path. Trim and lace, not topple. One man's poison is another man's pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. So next is Carol Wonderly, Edward Byer, and then the last card I have is from Don Prime. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, I see Brenda bringing a card up. If there's anybody other than Brenda who wishes to speak, please bring your card up now. All right, go ahead, Ms. Wonderly.
Thank you very much for listening to us tonight. We appreciate this opportunity. My name is Carol Wonderly. I live in the Broadmore, and twenty years ago, when I went to buy my house, I read my CCNRs. When I read my CCNRs, it told me that we had, all of the homeowners had to keep their trees at seventeen to twenty-three feet high, and that was to preserve the views and also the houses above us and to the side of us. So I felt very confident that I would always have my beautiful ocean view. I could see Catalina and a clear view of Dana Point Harbor. Now, and the trees were below the waterline, they were very low, there was no obstruction in my view. So I bought that house, knowing that the city of San Clemente, the council people, had mandated that tree height. So I felt confident that I would always have an ocean view. I don't anymore. Those trees in Verde Park have grown so high that I no longer have a view, and I'm wondering, who's taken that view from me? The trees? Who's let the trees grow? Verde Park once belonged to San Clemente, yeah, Verde Park once belonged to the Broadmore. And what?
Please, please, respect the speaker.
It once belonged to the Broadmore, and the Broadmore gave it to the city of San Clemente, I'm told, for $1. That was before I came there. But I had an ocean view, and I no longer do, because the city of San Clemente has not kept their end of the covenant. A covenant is a promise, and I read my covenants, my regulations, and that's what I walked away with. I no longer have a view. So please do something about Verde Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byer?
Good evening. As you can see earlier, I fell for Brenda Miller. I live in the Broadmore tract. I lost my view twenty-five years ago. I'm going to skip several pages that I have written and just read a few, but I'll hand the copies to all of you later. Our City Council's answer to our view problem is the good neighbor policy, which is, the city is the good neighbor, which means I'm the bad neighbor. When we want the trees removed and we pay the cost, when the problem is really due to the city's negligence and lack of understanding of our most valuable asset, our ocean views. The city's dumb, and I couldn't think of a better word than that, the city's dumb proposal is like going to an Orange County Performing Arts Center, purchasing an expensive orchestra seats ticket, and finding that you are sitting directly behind an inconsiderate man with a big cowboy hat. According to the city's illogical thinking, you would have to pay him to remove the hat. Doesn't make any sense. Ole Hansen's vision was a Spanish village by the sea, accenting the ocean with white houses and red roofs. Over the years, the Historical Society has worked very hard trying to preserve his palette of red and white Spanish architecture. But the Historical Society and the city governments, including the present one, have never considered Mr. Hansen's vision and dream of all of us having an ocean view. President John Kennedy said, "We are tied to the ocean, and when we go back to the sea, whether it is to sail or to watch, we are going back from whence we came." San Clemente's most valuable asset is the ocean; it is not trees. I think it's sad to many of us who want to see the ocean again, like I have to, get in my car, drive to the beach, and pay to park. I'm not against parking, paying for parking, but isn't it a shame that I now have to drive to see the ocean? I've given you this documentation for all of you to read. And I'm going to quote our municipal code eight dash five-two. May I have one more minute, please?
No, I'm sorry. In order to be fair to everybody, we need to be consistent when enforcing the time.
I will give this to you, though. Is that okay?
Thank you. Dr. Prime?
Good evening. The hour is late, so I will be very, very brief this evening, which is not typical for me. I'm concerned about consideration of changing the tree policy, because it seems like it's a piecemeal approach. And we all know what happens with piecemeal approaches. They lead to bad solutions and unintended consequences. And what are the unintended consequences of this proposed policy change? We don't know. Both the G-PAC, the general plan, and the strategic implementation plan recommend that we develop a comprehensive and holistic tree policy, and I hope that this Commission will recommend that. The Council asks staff to begin forming such a policy with input from the Planning Commission and other appropriate committees. That really is the way to go. I think the city has been very wise over the years to avoid getting into the business of private view protection. As other people have said, that's a very, very slippery slope. It will take untold man-hours of staff time, a huge expense to the city to process applications and disputes between neighbors. We see disputes here tonight already. That's a very slippery slope, and that is not a path that we should go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prime. And then Brenda Miller.
Thank you. I really didn't come here to speak tonight; I came here to listen. But I found everyone's perspectives actually fairly inspiring, and that caused me to think creatively a little bit. And I'm wondering just how in the world we're going to create a policy or a set of rules that does not, either conceptually or pragmatically, become arbitrary. Let's just presume that everybody is valid on both sides. What they're saying is true on both sides. And let's say we do go forward and we create a policy of tree removal. Then we have created two separate and unequal groups of people in this town. People who are lucky enough to have their views blocked by public trees, and people who are unlucky enough to have their views blocked by private trees. And I think that's a very difficult legal question to maneuver. It's going to require a fair amount of research. Perhaps our city attorney can chime in here. But I think it bears consideration of going forward, if at all, very, very carefully. I would be concerned about that just from a regulatory perspective. Things that are arbitrary are often considered to be capricious. If they are arbitrary and they are capricious, there is numerous case law on a variety of topics that indicates that those rules need to be discarded. They're not sustainable legally. So I understand this is very, very difficult. I sympathize and empathize with both sides. But nevertheless, from a pragmatic perspective, I don't know how this is truly fair for everyone in our town. So that's really just the essence of what I wanted to say. This is difficult, extremely so. Thank you.
I hope you feel better, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it looks as if Brenda is our last speaker. Does anybody else want to step forward? I see no one. I close the public hearing, and I just want to make one brief remark. I apologize if it appeared earlier that I was cutting off my colleague, Commissioner Ward. I was actually making a suggestion, and I was censoring myself, because I had immediately leapt to the granular level myself earlier. So I certainly have some thoughts about a strategy, about how we could approach this. However, I'm sure all of you do as well, so perhaps you can each share, or those of you who do have a strategy, share, and then we could perhaps settle on one before the hour gets to. I think, Kathy, did you call it earlier, our stupid hour?
I said nothing good happens after eleven o'clock. I've learned that, and I seconded one night to let it go past eleven, and I was sorry.
So if you'd like to share your strategy first, I think your light went on first, and then Don.
I will share. Can I just ask Sharon Hyder one question before I do that? Can I do that? Because one gentleman brought in an article and sent it to us from nineteen eighty-three. And at the end of this article, it states, "Parks Department voted five to zero to establish a height limit to trees on public property." I was astounded to read that. Do we know anything about that?
I do not. I'd be happy to research it, but as far as I know, we have no height restrictions. But I feign ignorance on this. I can bring you back.
Okay, that was just something that just stumped me, because...
Hank has the article.
He had the article, and I was really surprised at that. And if that's the case, that's something we've been remiss in picking up. So that was my only question.
Sorry, I can't answer it. I'll have to research that.
It's very odd, but it leads to a good point that I wasn't thinking of. You know, this article's from nineteen eighty-three, and this issue comes up periodically. And I think it comes up because it's not getting handled, and it's going to come up again and again, and now we have trees that are eighty to a hundred feet tall. And I think it's absolutely reasonable that we look at this. I'm seeing even some of the people that were for preserving trees are now saying that maybe we should be trimming more often and thinning them out. So I think everybody's finally getting to the point where these trees are so tall and so big that we really should be doing something, because they aren't the proper tree to have there. I think if people want to pay to have those down, there is procedures. We're not reinventing the wheel here. There's other cities that have done this. I've researched it, and there is a lot of things that we can do, guidelines, that will really limit these trees. And we can make a certain person on city staff, our city planner could be that person, where they go out and they determine, they determine whether there is an actual view that will happen if this tree is gone. And they determine where the view's going to be from. Palis Verdi's had where you could not say, "I have a view from my bathroom window or a closet." They were not going to restore that. They were going to look at one central area where you had your most view, and they would look at that. And there's also limits to how far the tree can be away from certain properties. There's a lot of guidelines that we can look at. We got a letter today that I think we need to consider. It was from Ronald Coleman, who is the ex-fire chief of San Clemente. He had a very, very respected career here in San Clemente, and he left San Clemente to become the state fire marshal. And he sent us a letter today saying, "These trees in Verde Park, eucalyptus, are a fire hazard." He has them up against the end of his, up on the slope against his house. He changed his roofing in order because of his concern with that fire hazard. All firemen know that they are hazards. You know, I think his opinion is valid on that. We have trees in the reservoir area. I think it's perfectly responsible that we do something about those. They're eighty feet, I don't know how many feet above the tank, but these people are frustrated because they have no recourse. We never cut down a tree. We never take them out unless it's diseased. So this good neighbor policy, it's being done in other cities for a very good reason. I even looked at case law, where some people have tried to sue, and the state came back and said, or the court came back and said that the state has a valid reason to police this, the state being us, that views are essential, and not only for serenity, but for, they said, monetary, that that was okay to consider that, that it was like a given. So I think it's reasonable to change this. We're only, you know, there's different things that we can do, but I would like to go into those when we get to that. But I think this is just going to keep coming up again and again, and it's because the city's not taking care of, these trees are overgrown.
Okay, so Kathy, your approach would be to move forward now and to study other cities' approaches, and to perhaps have the city planner be the person who evaluates the...
A city planner or staff...
Or somebody will have a designee.
That actually has it. There's procedures in place where if they don't like it, they can appeal it to us, and if they don't like our decision, they go to the City Council.
And then, Don, you have a strategy.
Well, one short question here, please, from Beaches Park, from around the maintenance side. What is the maintenance schedule for trees and parks far as trimming? Or define trimming and define pruning. Are they one and the same? And how often are you supposed to do it, say, on a park or around a city facility?
We have a seven-year cycle for trimming, which is not uncommon with municipalities. With that said, it doesn't mean that all trees are trimmed every seven years. The trees on El Camino Real, for instance, by council direction, are trimmed annually. We also look at species. Certain trees require service more often. So the general balance, again, is every seven years. Some trees are being serviced annually; some trees are being serviced less often than seven years. To get that balance. Definition of pruning and trimming, essentially those are the same terms. What we do in San Clemente is our specifications are based on the International Society of Bora Culture, which is what it sounds like. It's an international organization that's defined best management practices for all things to do with trees, evaluating trees for safety, defining dollar values for trees, but also appropriate trimming. And so our specifications are based on that. Good trimming is rarely taking more than twenty to thirty percent of the foliage off a tree at one time. No topping, no tipping, where they take the branches in, no removal of all foliage. I would say unfortunately in Southern California, you see a lot of inappropriate trimming, even by quote-unquote professionals. It's very unfortunate that some people feel that inappropriate trimming is appropriate, and so their expectations for what they expect from the city will never be met, because we don't do inappropriate trimming. So, you know, the type of piloting, where you're removing all foliage, et cetera, that you see in some of the homeowners' associations throughout Southern California, is, again, not appropriate trimming. Topping is not appropriate. The only time we would ever top a tree is if we had a historical tree, that that was the only way to save it. We have two in our system out of about sixteen thousand trees now that meet those guidelines. So, again, a seven-year cycle, with some trees being trimmed far more frequently, and our specifications being based on the International Society of Bora Culture.
Is eucalyptus on a tighter schedule recommendation than seven?
Depends on the location. We look at the areas like the medians on Pico and Del Cera, where we have the ironbark eucalyptus, with the speed limit there of forty-five miles an hour. Those archeros are going to get more frequent service than in a non-recreational area. Areas around structures, our community center, et cetera, are going to see more frequent trimming than some of our parks in the back section of parks. Verde Park, we've been talking a lot about that. In 2006, we had an assessment of the park, removed several trees based on the... In 2006, we had an assessment of the park, removed several trees based on the assessment, and changed the pruning cycle there to a two-and-a-half-year cycle rather than the seven-year cycle. We have since had another evaluation that's now recommending that the one species of eucalyptus be trimmed every year and a half, which I've discussed with the city manager. It's something we can do actually at no additional cost because we were able to negotiate with our tree trimmer. When his contract was extended two years ago, he's doing 10% more service at the same cost. So, that could easily be done at Verde where we go to the more frequent pruning cycle of that one species of tree.
When was the last time that Verde Park was trimmed?
We're just about ready for our two-and-a-half-year. Now, with that said, we've been in the park on a number of occasions to deal with emergency trees or with trees that had structural issues. The most recent evaluation by the Arbus was done in May of this year.
What's the trimming cycle, then, for this water tank issue, reservoir, et cetera?
The water reservoirs are very different animals. Those are handled through a landscape contract through utilities, and it's really more on-demand through utilities. They'll let us know if they have an issue with, a structural issue with a tree, pest issue, something like that, and we'll go out and take a look at it. But the utility trees, not all of our utility sites have landscaping, only actually a small number of that, and not all even have trees. So, it becomes a non-arguable point for many of the areas. I'm thinking that we probably have, I believe, four reservoirs or utility sites that have trees of any size. It's one of our smaller areas.
This is an unusual reservoir, if you want to call it. It's not a tank. I mean, it's not like some of the areas we've proved cellphone sites are. It's an in-ground, what'd you say, park?
Very buried.
Buried. You know, it's got a three-foot roof on it. So, why did they ever choose a tree to go around that reservoir rather than a hedge?
I've got 35 years in with the city of San Clemente last week, and that either predated my time or was done without my knowledge, so I can't speak to that.
Or senior moment like I have.
Quite possibly all three.
So, but we don't have a, do we have a record of when the last time those trees were trimmed or pruned or whatever?
I would have to check that with utilities. I couldn't speak to that.
In my person, in my walk around the site here in the last several days, there's a lot of, you know, fire material around the fence and walked all around it. And I'm not a tree expert by any imagination, but it seems like it's been many, many. I couldn't tell you when the last time they were trimmed.
And some of the neighbors have actually paid for trimming there, so they have been done, but I can't speak to when that last time was.
Okay. So, thank you very much for your information. This is a kind of ideal, this is kind of a dual-phase issue. I agree with Commissioner Ward's statement that this periodically comes up. The city is, we love our trees, but we don't do a good job maintaining them. And so, this is kind of a reoccurring cyclical type of an issue. Having gone through 40-some meetings of the general plan and somewhat overseeing, looking over the shoulder of the G-PAC, we do have tensions going forward of a tree ordinance. We made a very strong stand in the city council letter last year from this planning commission, although there's been turnover when this issue first arrived. And we stated to the council at that time that we should go forward in a very methodical, process-based thinking with expert opinion around the table, rather. And we made a very strong statement. It was signed on 17 May. I have a copy of it here by the then-chairman of HEVRA, that said, "We'll review the standards and come up with a tree ordinance." And then, we just recently, on the 17th of June, approved the strategic implementation plan, the final piece of our general plan, and that goes before city council this next month on the 19th. In that plan is the tree ordinance, update the master landscape plan for scenic corridors, identify centers for tree maintenance on private property, update tree inventory, update the existing master landscape plan for scenic corridors, and every one of those is coded by staff red. There's the plan. Red means, that means they're going to start on it now, as soon as the council approves it. And in the words of the great Don Corleone in The Godfather, "Beaches Parks and Recreation, where's the rose?" As the OPR, you know, the personal responsible department. So, no, you people have been waiting for 25 years or watched things leave. Your view, I've had some of my views in my street go away. My parents bought my house. I could see a lot of ocean, and my friend across the street now is the president of the Palm Tree Society of San Clemente, and has a wonderful series of tree, which I think are very beautiful to look at. So, I'm not in favor of changing this process or amending this policy. I think we should go forward and build a proper ordinance. We should budget for it. We should get experts around the table that really come forward with various types of tree sequences, like Dennis has mentioned. It's no longer in our palette. We should come up with a measured plan. Eucalyptus are not out there. We do have a safety issue. So, I'm for following the plan that we've laid out. I'm a retired experimental test pilot. You plan the flight, you fly the plan. And I've had many days when, in my business, I had a bad day at the office, but I'm here. So, that's my view. Now, I feel this is two phases, and I started that, that we could also be good neighbors. And Jim, I took some pictures today. Could you bring those up? So, I'm driving home from the reservoir, and this is about two blocks away from where Sharon lives, down on Toledo. It came cross-site. This is on my cellphone, but this is a private view on Toledo, just bottom of Cristobal. This is a private house, and those are eucalyptus trees, and they're in the process, and they've been working on them for two days.
No, down the bottom, right there, right there.
There you go. And so, that's what's going on on a private street. That's Toledo, and about two blocks down from where I live on the way to T Street. And there's several pictures I took. I was driving home. I got out with my cellphone, and I forwarded to our famous city planner. I would have forwarded off my phone to you, Sharon, but you weren't in my address book. And so, here was this process, and they've been down there for a while, and they were thinning or pruning or trimming those eucalyptus trees to make it healthy because they're right around a very beautiful house right on the edge of Trafalgar Canyon. So, my pitch tonight is I think we should follow the plan. We should not amend our ordinance, but I think we should be good neighbors. And I don't know what your trimming situation, maybe that's inappropriate trimming in your...
That's topping.
I don't know if they topped it, whatever they did on the private thing, but they certainly thinned it on the side.
That one's going to be...
They've done that about every three years. But anyway, I was going to encourage that we do, while we do this very deliberate approach that we possibly do, you know, help these people out with their fire hazard or their safety effort, because I saw the email from the fire chief today of some of those trees. And we have to certainly look at it from a safety issue. I also agree, from a safety issue, the fire authority, I have friends that have had to clear their brush off their hills, and, you know, if the fire authority is going to impose those rules on our private citizens, we should step forward and impose it upon ourselves. So, I view the, we take trees out carefully. We preserve them. We should have an incremental plan of eliminating them, and that's my view. We do not change the ordinance, but we do become good neighbors and help out these people.
Okay. So, Don, see if I summarize this properly. Your approach is that we recommend that we stay the course with the tree ordinance and continue to have that be a high priority on strategic implementation, and make sure that as part of the tree ordinance, we address the fact that our palette of trees has changed and perhaps have a plan for how that might affect some of our existing parks. And in the meantime, make sure to have more aggressive maintenance in some of these areas, particularly with respect to safety of the residents around those areas. Okay? Just for the record, I'm very close to that myself. Jim, I think you are next.
I am one of those people who's paid a neighbor to cut down some trees. I have a bad fortune to have a neighbor who made me wait years before they let me pay to cut down their trees through various circumstances. So, I know it's very frustrating to lose your view and be sitting there and wanting a better view and being willing to pay for that. But I was also on the G-PAC, and we had a, we had some real discussion about protection of these private views. And, you know, long story short, in the research that we did and trying to look at these alternatives, it was just going to be a mess to protect private views. As difficult as it is in terms of the negotiation and fingers crossed, hope I have a good neighbor who lets me do this kind of thing, or I might have a good neighbor who still says no because they have a tree they've got an emotional attachment to for some reason. But getting the city in the middle of that a lot of times is, since some of the cities we looked at was pretty problematic. It was not a problem we wanted to buy, even though we, you know, we liked the views, and, you know, whether that's up the beach or inland like mine is. So, I'm, I am very hesitant to give some go-ahead to kind of a solution that seems to be saying that we have to do private view preservation, that the city is required to do that, particularly when we aren't saying that private property owners also have that same requirement. In other words, we'd be giving an extra legal burden to the city that other property owners don't have. And I think that that's, there's some problematic things in that as well. And we would get probably very complex in trying to do the right thing and be fair for people. These decisions can be very, very difficult, very emotional. But I do think, I think one of the speakers hit the nail on the head. If you listen to what we've heard and the emails that we've gotten, there's basically three problems that are going on here, and they're very focused problems. Eucalyptus trees, Verde Park, the reservoir. And at least two of those, Verde Park and the reservoir, could potentially be addressed by new landscape plans for those areas. You know, and if that meant, whatever that means in terms of replacing the trees, I don't know what the specifics are, but if there's an issue with them now, and we can be a good neighbor by just saying, you know, "Let's go and take a look at these landscape plans that are now, you know, many years old and see if it's time to update those," that might be the kind of direct solution to this very specific problem, rather than doing a kind of a broad solution that sort of applies to the whole town when really what we've got is a problem in these areas. Beyond that, I very much agree with Don. We looked at this in G-PAC. We looked at this on the planning commission in terms of tree ordinances, in terms of identifying important historic trees, and we need to develop a tree inventory for that, things like that. That's sort of the right way to approach it. We've already got it. At least we put it down as a high priority for the city, and, you know, the city council has that information. I think that's the way to solve that in a comprehensive, long-term way. When I was looking at this problem and this, you know, just to do this one thing, I kept pulling on this thread, and I kept getting more and more and more threads. It kept getting more and more complex. So, that's why I think we need to do this in the form of an ordinance. If we're going to sort of offer to be a good neighbor, we need to be very careful and say, you know, "We're not making promises here. We just want to, you know, do the right thing," so to speak. And that's going to be, that's going to be difficult, and it needs to be comprehensive, and it needs to take a lot of these other factors into account. So, you know, my preference in terms of the strategy is to address anything like this in the context of the tree ordinance that's in the strategic implementation plan, that's prioritized in the strategic implementation plan. And if we're going to address these problems, let's address them very specifically, probably in something like new landscape plans for those areas.
Okay. So, you, like Don and myself, you're in support of staying the course with the tree ordinance. Don talked about addressing the palette or the landscape plans within the context of the tree ordinance. Are you suggesting that we would suggest, we would address that, those new landscape plans now or within the context of the tree ordinance?
The tree ordinance, the way we've prioritized it, we're saying we're going to finish this within three years. That's a bit of a, you know, even though that's our highest priority, that's a bit of a long horizon. So, I could see potentially making a recommendation that we look at revising the landscape plans for those areas so that we can, you know, maybe do a landscape plan in a matter of months or perhaps a year, you know, get some updates there. But, you know, that's, in terms of the quickest approach for the residents who've been dealing with this problem, I think that that would be a more, a more specific targeted approach.
And not focused on view protection, but focus on the fact that eucalyptus may not be the most appropriate tree for the community for a variety of different reasons.
That would certainly be a big part of it. I think there's a lot of issues with eucalyptus, yeah.
Okay. Bart?
Well, my position's wandering all over the place here.
Let's crack!
Just pick one out of the air. I definitely agree with Don that this really belongs in the general plan. But I, and I like the two-phased approach to solve the immediate issues. However, I'm not opposed to putting together a subcommittee to study this. I don't think that's out of the question. And whatever comes back, we don't necessarily have to pass on. But I think we need input from the other departments, Beach and Rec and Gulf, so we have that information. But currently, I'm leaning towards the long-term approach. We made it a priority, and that's where it belongs. And I want to make sure we don't avoid protecting views just because it's difficult. If there's a solution, let's find it, even if we have a long time to figure it out, but not shy away from it because it's difficult. People bought their property. They're worth a lot of money, and I mean a lot of money, to save their views. I've grown up with views my whole life in the Pacific Palisades, and there's eucalyptus there, and we got them cut down, not cut down, but at least trimmed to keep the view. And I don't think we should overlook that importance. So, I think I agree with Don. I think that's the best approach, but I would not be opposed to having a subcommittee and share our thoughts with the other two commissions and get their feedback also so we can come up with something viable.
Okay. So, you favor the tree ordinance, however, you would not be opposed in the short term in taking this one issue out and looking at that immediately as part of a subcommittee?
Yes, but that's not committing to changing the ordinance until we get that information back.
It's an analysis, that the purpose of the subcommittee would be analysis.
Because I'll take all the input I can get to make this decision.
Okay. All right. And Wayne?
Well, let me share a couple of stories. I'm a residential real estate appraiser, and last month, I appraised a condo in Dana Point. And I've been appraising this condo for 10 years. This is my third appraisal. My first appraisal, they had an ocean view. My second appraisal, trees were growing, and this was not in the association. This was outside of the association, just about 300 feet away. My most recent appraisal, I took 15% off the value because her ocean view was totally obscured. So, views are very valuable. They're very valuable out there. Another story, quick story. I used to have a place up in the Santa Monica Mountains on Seven Acres called Wayne's World. And, yes, I did. There's a sign out there saying Wayne's World. And it was surrounded by eucalyptus trees and pine trees. I lived through two firestorms. These were not just fires. These were firestorms. And I have to tell you, when a firestorm approaches you, these eucalyptus trees explode. They absolutely explode. My house wasn't burned down because they lit backfires both times, and I was saved. But I must tell you, there is a health and safety issue here. I don't think we should be planting any more eucalyptus trees in San Clemente, period, to say the least. I don't think we should be doing that at all. We really need, we really need to stay the course with the tree ordinance. I agree with you all on that. I think we need to take a look at, immediately, I don't want this can kick down the road, I think we need to take a look at resolving Verde Park and the reservoir. I think we need to take a look at resolving Verde Park and the reservoir. I, I think that's important to do. I was at Verde Park yesterday, took some pictures, really astounded by that one area I was talking about where the trees are along the pathway, and there's a slope, a lot of debris on that slope, a lot of debris. Incredible fire hazard. So, but also, I think it's important that, I don't know if we really have the power here to appoint a subcommittee. I think that is an issue that really needs to be in the purview of the city council, whether or not they should be asking these various commissions and committees to, to do that. Because I think we're involved here in something that is out of our policymaking prerogative here. But I think that if they do suggest a subcommittee, I certainly would like to be on it. So that's, that's my take on it. I think that there should be several areas, though, that in the long term that really should be excluded from cutting down trees. And these are the really, I consider the sacred areas, such as Elder Hansen Beach Club, the trees along El Camino Real, by the way, which were planted by Bertha Hendry. And if we ever start cutting down those trees, Bertha, who lived to 101, who's now in heaven, will, will, will send a thunderbolt down to us if, if that ever happens. And, but, and also, you know, the beach palm trees and also Casa Romanaque area. So I'm, in essence, I want to stay the course with the tree ordinance, that this is part of the general plan. Let's not, let's, let's not change that course there. But I think we should immediately address some of these areas here with regard to Verde Park and, and the reservoir.
Okay, so, and, and as far as immediately addressing them, we have two different thoughts on the table. One is immediate maintenance while the tree ordinance, so, so that we can have some relief and added measure of safety in those areas while the tree ordinance is being developed. And one is looking at new landscape plans for those areas. Which, which one of those, or if either?
New landscape plans, new landscape plans for those areas. I don't want this situation kicked down the road. These, these folks have been waiting for years to have some sort of relief in Verde Park. I do not believe, by the way, that homeowner associations should have the right to dictate that. And let me share with you something here. If, if there was a group of homeowners and homeowner association that wanted to take some trees down a mile away or whatever, and they approached the board and the board said, "Yeah, we're going to spend $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 to do that," and I belong to that homeowner association on the other ridge, and they didn't, and they didn't bother me, I don't want my homeowner dues to go, to go for something like that. The city has had a policy all along not to become involved in homeowner associations, and we should not do that. We should not take that slippery road down there. Plus the fact that I don't really believe that, and we do some research on it, but I don't believe that homeowner association dues are legally able to be used outside of their, their homeowner association itself. Their homeowner dues are within that association. So I think that's, I think that that's something. But I don't believe that homeowner associations should have that, should have that right.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're not, because all the hearing has been closed.
You can't speak from that. So, but I don't believe that homeowner associations should have that right. Individuals should have that right, but homeowner associations should not be acting as a person.
Kathy, did you want to amend your earlier commentary?
No, but I, I have some questions on what we've been saying. If we are acknowledging that there is a fire hazard with these trees, and we're, some of us are saying that we need to look at this and look at it quickly, you know, I don't understand yours completely. We, I don't know what we're talking about. Are we doing a committee? Are we going to take this up again?
Well, we're talking about, everybody was sharing their approach, and then I think now we're looking for commonality between the approaches. So I think we heard, Bart was the only one, I think, who said of, he was open to the subcommittee, although, although what you said might be, okay. So, but I don't, I didn't hear a majority around the subcommittee. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, as far, as far as the subcommittee is concerned, I, I think, for my money, the purpose of the subcommittee would be to start to craft the ordinance.
Craft the ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would, that's the kind of subcommittee that I would adopt.
Rather than, rather than to address the short-term problem.
That's not the way, I don't think the staff's going to approach the tree ordinance. There's a, there's a professional, proper way to go about doing it. I'm, I'm not in favor of subcommittees in general. I mean, I think I'm with, amazingly, with my fellow commissioner, Eagleson, that, you know, city councils have a lot of purview. I know Beach Department, Rec, they, they kind of work on a subcommittee basis. At one time, I think Sharon, when you came down, there was eight or nine of them in BPNR, and I think you winnowed that down a little bit with sunset rules and a lot of hard management. And I, you know, this can get very open-ended. You have to, you know, what are they going to do? Where are they going to do it? How are they going to do it? When are they going to do it? What's the product? And this is a very convoluted issue. This is a very, this is a, there's a lot of what-ifs and different paths, the things you start having to get answers on. And so I don't, you know, you get two people from us, and two people from Gulf, and two people from, and then the staff time involved. I don't know what the output, and when is it going to, when is the output going to be, come? Is it a year from now?
I, I, I agree.
So that's why I think subcommittee formation's got to be done very deliberately. I think we probably should need a council approval. I agree with you on that. There's staff time, there's budget involved here, and what's the output? When does it come?
We're just making a recommendation, right?
Yeah, my recommendation is not support a subcommittee, because I, I just, I just don't, I think there's, there's just a tough time to get everybody together to execute it, staff time, and make it all happen. I'm sorry. I think, you know, we should go the staff approach of forming this tree ordinance and tree, and go down the path of strategic implementation plan. Maybe you want to fast-track some landscape plans, maybe that's reasonable. And then there's maybe a third echelon that's more immediate, which is safety. You know, and we have fire authority, people inspecting private lots, friends of mine up in Pacific Heights are cleaning their slopes as they speak, and the fire authority, we, the city, should clear our brush from the tree. I think, in fact, the Simple Green people just did that in Verde Park. I talked to the guy last week. You just had him do it up on the back slope up there. So, you know, I think safety's first, landscape plan intermediate, stay the course, and I'm not in favor of subcommittees.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that if, if we had a motion that recommended that we not look at this issue of view preservation in a piecemeal way, or a tree replacement ordinance, or not ordinance, but some kind of mechanism for, for tree replacement for view preservation as, in a piecemeal way, we think that that ought to be assessed as part of a larger tree ordinance process. That should be driven in this, in the way that we usually pursue the development of a new ordinance, which does not come from a subcommittee, but it comes from staff. However, we think that we should engage in some immediate maintenance in these areas for safety purposes, and that perhaps staff should begin looking at ways to amend the existing maintenance plans, to transition them to trees that might be more appropriate for those sites, given some of the safety concerns that the neighborhoods have. Is that something that, you know, kind of captures what we've, what we've been talking about? I, I could be, I could be very supportive of that. You know, I, I do agree, several of you have talked about, you know, this is a longstanding problem. We don't want to, you know, just simply kick it down the road. We do need to address it, part of it at this point. However, we spent, I don't know how many hours, you know, at the planning commission level and G-PAC, looking at a lot of different angles to this, to the larger aspect of tree ordinance and, and view preservation. And we realized that, you know, the more we looked at it, the more angles we uncovered. And it's a, it's a, it's a lengthy process that we should really explore in depth, and, and I think we can only do that as part of the tree ordinance. So I'm wondering if anybody would like to make a motion that embrace those issues that we seem to be in agreement on.
Before we vote, I've got one question. Who is going to review and determine that this maintenance program is appropriate and accomplishes what we want it to accomplish?
Well?
I mean, do we need to give the city council direction of what the end result is we want to occur, or do they decide on it, or how's that going to work?
I think we give suggestions, no direction.
What you did was making a recommendation for the city council, and the city council's going to consider it and ultimately decide. So, you know, the first part is pretty simple, I understand that. You know, let's, you know, stay the course with the, the landscape ordinance that was, you know, envisioned in the general plan. And the second part, it sounds like you want us, as staff, the recommendation would be to have staff look further into the two trouble areas, which is the water reservoir and Verde Park, look at maintenance issues, look at appropriateness of tree species and potential alternative landscape solutions.
Yes. And, yes, I think that's what we're saying. Yes.
But in doing that, we're basically saying the city is paying for all of that. A complete change of landscape and, and new trees. That's what we're saying in that, isn't it? I mean, I'm pretty confused.
Well, no, you're asking staff to make a, you know, to look at it and recommend it. We might think of potentially doing that in a phased-in approach, or some other alternative. So it doesn't mean necessarily we're going to come out with a landscape plan tomorrow and then we're going to wholesale replace all the trees. It would give staff the opportunity to, you know, do some research, figure out, you know, the health of the trees, when it, will it be appropriate to phase in or not, or whether the trees might make actual, actually perfect sense and recommend that to the city council. It just gives us the direction to evaluate it further, to try and, I think, come up with, as Wayne said, a long-term solution to this particular problem, those two areas.
And I think very specifically utilizing the existing process to do that.
Absolutely.
Do we have a time on what that existing process is? Three years.
For the tree ordinance?
Oh, for the tree ordinance, yeah, we do. It's, well, assuming that the city council approves the SIP, then it's a three-year window. And I really, you know, I know that Parks and Recreation, just like planning, has a lot of items on their plate right now, so it would be, you know, when the opportunity presents itself. And Sharon probably could answer that better in terms of what her workload is. But I know we have the, you know, the beach club, the...
Sharon's got a lot of free time.
Can I just say, though, if we're going to take three years to craft a tree ordinance, I don't understand how a tree ordinance is going to change the fact that the utility site has 80, 200-foot trees.
But we're saying they're going to craft a, they're, they're going to look at amending the landscape plans for those two areas in the short term. But meanwhile, we're going to, you know, keep the, the tree ordinance as a red item on the strategic implementation plan.
So tell me how, if we change the landscape plan for, say, that utility lot, how is that going to take the trees down? Where they're no longer blocking the view, they're no longer...
I'm just trying to repeat your recommendation.
No, I know. I'm really confused, actually.
But what it could be, okay, is that we would evaluate, say, the reservoir, we could, the purpose of the trees, what are the purposes of the trees there? We don't even actually know. Dennis doesn't remember, we don't have a plan. So we could evaluate that and say, well, the job might be to screen, screen it from public view, from the, you know, lower levels, lower elevations. So maybe another kind of tree would make sense there, or a bush even, or shrub. And then Verde Park, do you have a similar kind of analysis? Maybe, you know, an evaluation of a potential solution to the problem that's occurring there, which we hear is, you know, private views is one of the things, but there's also safety and fire hazards too, so.
I still think it's kicking the can down the road. I do.
I don't think so. I think we're addressing these, I think we're addressing, I think we're suggesting that staff look at ways to amend the landscape with focus on improving the safety and perhaps selecting a species of tree that is not as problematic as the eucalyptus for those areas.
Isn't that what we were asked to do, though? It says if we wanted to do it on those utility sites, it would be through a, an amended site plan permit. So why, and we would just be recommending that you look at that and, and amend the site plan permit for, you know, to change those trees or take them down. So I, it's, to me, it's like what we were asked to do. They gave us two steps that we could take in order to do this.
Well, I think, I think what we're, what we're not saying is that right now, that we do not think that a, a program to replace trees on public lands that are blocking views is citywide, is something that we should, we should address. I think we're all acknowledging that these two locations have a lot of problems, you know, and the view element is just one aspect of them. There, there are a number of reasons why this species in this, in these areas might be a problem, and perhaps there might be, and it's no longer part of our plant palette, so perhaps there is a, a better landscaping solution that, as Jim says, that by the water tower can, can better address the, the purpose of landscaping in that area. And they could make a suggestion for how to address Verde Park as well, whether it's a phased-in plan, or whether it's a, you know, a, a plan where it's, you know, some, where they make, where, where they suggest it's a more immediate whole park, I'm sorry, it's, it's in the stupid hour. It's, it's replaced at, all at the same time. But I think we're, I think we are, I think we're clear about the fact that we don't think that, that the policy should be, that there should be a new policy. We think we should address it within the context of, of the current process.
Right.
You could stand back up, Sharon.
I was only there if you had a question.
But I, I, I think, is it, is, do you both have a sense of, I mean, we could, we'll certainly make a motion, but do you, are we, are we being clear that we think utilizing the existing process to amend the landscaping plans and, and perhaps have more aggressive maintenance in the short term?
That's the motion.
It's, that, yeah.
We just made the motion.
Yeah, but I shouldn't, so.
I'll make one second. I'll second.
Is that, is that clear to, is that clear to both of you, what, what our intention is?
Yes, I believe we can make that recommendation to city council. There will be some follow-up actions about how much that costs to do and that sort of thing, but we can certainly take that forward.
Okay, so do we, would somebody make a formal motion?
We have a motion.
Are we doing, all right, well, it's a little odd for me to make it. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so six, six one.
Particularly one abstention.
Well, I, I, her motion is to utilize the existing process to amend landscape and have aggressive, or potentially have aggressive maintenance in the short term.
And, and, and potentially have aggressive maintenance in the short term, and, and to not, and to not enact a new policy at this time, but address the question of view preservation within the context of the tree ordinance, which is already, which we've already indicated is a priority in the strategic implementation.
And all the commissioners understood that to be the motion?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, and, and this was specific to Verde Park and the reservoir.
And the reservoir.
Those are the two areas.
Stay the course with the tree ordinance.
For the larger policy, stay the course with the...
The larger policy is to stay the course within the tree ordinance, not changing. The immediate thing is to deal with Verde Park and, and the reservoir.
With the tree ordinance.
Do we want to, do we need to, are you clear on this?
Do you want to read it back? Let's, let's read it back, make sure it's what we all intended, since it is a late hour.
To utilize the existing process to amend landscape and potentially have aggressive maintenance in the short term, and to not enact a new policy at this time, the larger policy is stay the course with the tree ordinance.
And the strategic implementation. And the strategic implementation plan?
Yes, I think.
And the general plan?
Yeah, to, I, I think it was, not, to not enact a new policy at this time, but wait to consider that as part of the tree ordinance. Meaning, a new policy.
And after, we say to amend the landscaping plans, we should say to amend the landscaping plans in Verde Park and the reservoir.
It's a site permit.
Right. Reservoir site, that's what that is.
It's a site plan for the reservoir.
It's a landscape plan that's amended landscape.
Yeah, a site plan, it's a site plan for the reservoir and as a master plan for the park.
Pretty very kind of master plan, right?
Should I apply the reservoir for the location? On street?
Coto, Redwood?
Reservoir.
Oh, that's an easy one. Is, is everybody is comfortable that that is what we voted on? Is that correct? Can everybody indicate that, that is what we voted on? Okay. All right.
So that should be indicated in the minutes, too, Eileen?
I'm, I'm...
I have a suggestion, which may help you.
Mr. Brody, I'm so, I'm sorry, but the public hearing is, is, is closed. All right. Perhaps. What, share it with staff, I think that's a good idea. Okay. All right. So that resolves that matter. Any reports of commissions and staff?
The coastal advisory committee met last week, had a briefing with new members, and we still have a, a, a position outstanding due to the resignation of Ken Eagleson, so that the city hall will entertain that same process to fill that slot, so.
I don't, I don't know that you've mentioned that you...
I'm about ready. And similar to the minutes we approved tonight, they, they organize themselves, and I was elected the chair of the coastal advisory committee.
Congratulations.
Purely, I think, just based on turnover and longevity, whatever.
Nothing to do with...
He went to the bathroom when they had the vote.
I'm sure it had something to do with your skill and experience this month.
Eagleson's been waiting for a year for that. So we're organizing the schedule and going forward.
Well, I think, I, I think we should certainly go out of record to say that, or I, I would like to go out of record to say I think they made a very wise, a very wise choice in order to have continuity during a challenging time for...
Yeah, and the LCP and everything else, so.
All right. If there's nothing else, then perhaps we could have a motion adjourned.
I'll move re-adjourned in the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on August 6th, 2014, in the city council chambers located at 100 Avenue of Presidio.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?